Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, March 29, 2021. This evening, we're getting an early start so that we can accomplish some business ahead of a significant meeting that will happen closer to 7:00 PM this evening. So first, out of the gate, without any delay, we'll welcome Chief Cassidy for coronavirus community update. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. I believe that we have a presentation quickly. I recognize that we have a lot of business to attend to this evening, so I will be brief as possible. So since last week, we have had 21 additional cases added to our case count, so that brings us up to 713 total diagnoses of COVID for Holliston. But the good news is today, we were able to take 50 cases off of our active list. That's the first time that we have had any recoveries noted since March 6th. There have been no changes to our number of fatalities. Therefore, currently, we have 22 active cases, which is down 29 from last week. We have 18 addresses at which there are cases. That's down 19 from last week. All of our cases continue to be at single-family homes with 15 single cases at single-family homes and three clusters at single-family homes. We had nine new cases last Wednesday, seven new cases on Friday, and five new cases today. So our graph definitely has the right look to it in terms of the fact that there are just a couple of active cases at the top of that very tall list. Looking at our positivity, we remain in the yellow. That's nine weeks that we have been in the yellow. Our positivity remains at 2.48%. We are again above the state's positivity level, which the 14-day average for the state last Thursday was 2.01. This is the fourth consecutive week that our positivity has been higher than the state. Unfortunately, the state's positivity has been over 2% on their seven-day average for several consecutive days, and that is the threshold at which the governor had previously indicated that some changes to the reopening strategy could occur. So we're continuing to monitor that. In terms of the map, again, Sherburne is in the gray, Milliter is in the red, all of the other communities around us remain in the yellow. We are up to 32 communities in the red as of Thursday. That is up from 20 the previous week, and you will note that there appears to be a bit of a surge taking place down on Cape Cod. In terms of positivity for the state, as noted last week, there is a little bit of an uptick in the positivity. And next slide, last week, Ms. Hein had asked a question about hospitalizations, and this also is showing the same uptick. So again, hospitalizations and deaths are a late indicator of cases, but we do definitely see the uptick in the hospitalizations according to the state. Next slide. Also, Ms. Hein had asked a question regarding who is being hospitalized and the deaths. And so according to the state, as of the two-week period ending March 24th, the average age of those who were confirmed positive was 35 years old, the average age for those hospitalized was 63 years old, and the average of the COVID-19 deaths was 77 years old.
By that median age, or are you taking that?
That's the state's definition of average. They're claiming average.
Okay.
So if you mean, I can look at one of the footnotes and figure out what they're using for a calculation method, but they're billing it as average.
Okay.
In terms of where we are for the COVID vaccinations, obviously, last week, it was open to 60-plus and certain workers. Next week's date of April 5th, residents 55 and older and residents with one or more medical conditions. We are continuing to encourage folks to pre-register on the mass.gov/covidvaccine website so that when they become eligible, based on the group that they're in and their age, they will be contacted. Once they are contacted, they have 24 hours to respond, whether it's by phone or by text or by email, however it is that they register with the system. In terms of vaccination here in Holliston, as of last Thursday, 34.1% of our community is at least partially vaccinated, which means they have at least one shot and included in that group. 83% of the individuals, 65 to 74, and a very encouraging 95% of individuals, 75 and over. So again, kudos to the senior center and all the volunteers that have helped to make sure that our most vulnerable population are getting access to vaccinations. And currently, 17.61% of our community are fully vaccinated. I would note that last week, the Department of Public Health, the state Department of Public Health, indicated there's a slight bump in their Johnson &amp; Johnson allotment that was coming into the state, and they are directing those shots to the state in-home vaccination program, which began last week. Local boards of health had to choose between two options, which was either letting the local board of health manage in-home vaccination or allowing it to be coordinated at the state level. So in terms of the logistics of trying to minimize the number of times that they have to get individuals out to folks' homes to vaccinate in the home itself, they're trying to make sure that the J&amp;J allotment that the state's getting is earmarked toward that vaccination program. It also helps in terms of their storage issues, and they have a longer period of time in which they can use those from when they are received. Our regional collaborative continues to move forward. The contract was signed last week with the DoubleTree Hotel, and they may be able to order the vaccine this week for future weeks. And obviously, as vaccine availability becomes available, we will keep you informed. When the allocation is committed to our regional collaborative, the regional collaborative will have the ability to hold back 25% of that allotment that we can use for a closed registration system for our residents or our employees. But when we're ordering 1,000 vaccines in one particular week, the 25% holdback spread out over eight communities isn't really a lot of earmarked vaccines per community, especially if we want to make sure that certain employee groups or certain residents have the first shot. So it's going to be a while before we're able to really ramp up. We're still not sure when we're going to be getting our first delivery. But with that, I will pause and see if there are any questions on just the state of the state.
Then just a comment and a question. A comment is that I did pre-register, and it's very easy, so I highly recommend anybody who wants to do so should. And it's easy to do. You get a nice email every week that says, hey, you're still on the list. We remember you, and we will contact you when you have an appointment available.
Excellent.
And my quick question for you is the reduction. So when we got to the reduction, there was a second of our slide, 50 cases?
Yes.
Is that, is the reason why it comes off like any big surge, is it more of like an administrative exercise necessarily than sort of a, why does it happen that way?
I'm glad you asked. I do get some feedback from time to time, and people are concerned that we plateau for a while, then all of a sudden, there's a big decrease. In fact, we've had times in the past where we cleared over 100 cases in one day. We are at the behest of our contract nurse agency, and they need to go into the Maven system, and they need to reconcile their surveillance and their contacts with individuals and note which cases are now listed as having recovered. So it's not just a function of their 14 days since they received a positive diagnosis.
It's an administrative exercise.
It's not only administrative, but then there's a delay between when the nursing consultants makes the determination that they've recovered to when they communicate that to Board of Health, to when Board of Health then communicates that to Public Safety.
Okay.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Two more quick questions. Where is the regional vaccination site anticipated to be?
DoubleTree in Westboro.
Okay. And then I want to hear hope in what you had to say, that 83% of individuals, 65 to 74, are partially vaccinated, and we're seeing the average age of hospitalized individuals being 63. That Holliston stands in good shape.
I absolutely wish to continue to convey hope. I'm delighted that so many of our at-risk population have received the vaccination so far, and I just do still need to offer the caution that cases and positivity continue to rise, so people need to continue to practice their mitigation steps considering the future weeks.
Couldn't agree more. There is such a thing as local community spread. Is there such a thing as local community herd immunity? So we are at 17.61% fully vaccinated, I think, the goal is in general 70% vaccinated before you have something like herd immunity. Does that work at the local level, or is that really not?
Only if you had a closed population. Unfortunately, we have a very fluid population, so unfortunately, that wouldn't be as effective. If we were on an island off the coast and we didn't allow visitors, perhaps we could achieve that just through vaccination, but unfortunately, I think we're going to have to continue to wait for other measures.
All right. That's a thank you.
I have no questions this evening. In the interest of moving things along, I will ask those dependent on a Zoom call if they have any questions. For the chief regarding the coronavirus community update, please raise your hand. Hearing none. We will move on to the CARES Act program update.
His hand was up as soon as he entered the room.
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Chief.
Great. Thank you. So in terms of our CARES Act update, there were 11 additional expenses posted to Munis since last week, and our total appears not only on the slide, it will also appear on the information that we're putting out on our weekly report on Thursday evenings. And I would note that today, we did receive a Freedom of Information Act request from a local media station regarding our CARES Act revenue and the expenses to date and to whom all of those payments have been made. So we have 10 days to comply with that request. In terms of the pie chart, that also has been updated. Again, with only 11 additional smaller expenses, it was a difference of about $4,000 from last week. In terms of requests, I have two for you this evening. The first one comes from Facilities, and that is for eight air purifiers for the senior center. This is very similar to the ones that have been deployed in other municipal buildings, and as the senior center looks forward to being open soon to their clientele, they were hoping that they could have eight of the same air filters, air filtration systems that we, air purifiers, excuse me, that we have in other municipal buildings, which are designed within H3 Epafilter that will cover up to 840 square feet, and they're looking for a total of eight for a cost of $1,996.
I'd like to make a motion for that item, Mr. Sparrow. If there's any questions, we can offer those, but.
I don't have any questions. I will make a motion to approve the CARES Act request for eight air purifiers for the senior center.
Motion of the second.
Second for $1,996.
Any questions on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Carrie.
And the second and final request this evening. Last week, the chair had made an inquiry regarding the needs specifically for Parks and Recreation. There was interim guidance issued by EEA last week regarding health and safety standards for opening, reopening, and I did double-check with the Parks and Rec Director, and I asked him what his needs were going to be as it pertains to cleaning of the high-use and high-traffic areas, and I said, would an electrostatic sprayer or a fogger similar to what we're using in some other buildings be useful for you? And he felt that electrostatic sprayer would be very helpful for a man spotted. And so what I'm recommending is the exact same one that Facilities has, which one of the duties and responsibilities of the summer staff is cleaning of areas where their guests are during the summer. So this would be a very easy thing to train them on the use, and then again, once the season was over, they would be able to keep it at their building and use it for that facility as well. So it's a $700 request.
Mr. Sparrow. Any questions? Or would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve a $700 CARES Act request for an electrostatic sprayer for Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
Any questions on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Carrie.
And just lastly, we continue to monitor information coming out of the U.S. Treasury and the Division of Administration of Finance as it pertains to the American Rescue Point Act, and no news yet. As soon as I have something, I will get to it.
I think it's going to be very soon, Chief.
I'm looking forward to it.
All right. Thanks much for your report tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Move on to the warrants.
Certainly. We have one warrant. I will make a motion to approve the warrant for $1,486,722.58 of that, $1,240,048.52 this town.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ben. Let's just tell the comment. I would ask people if they have any interest in town business this evening to bring forth their questions now. If it's related to our upcoming agenda, please refrain. Any questions? Hearing none. We will move on to the comments from the town administrator.
As we have quite a busy evening tonight, I will refrain from those. I have a few updates that can wait till next week on where we are. One of the updates that was requested was an update on past warrant articles as we approached the Maytown meeting, so I'll have that for next week. Otherwise, we can move to the next agenda.
Thank you, Travis. Let us move on to the annual town meeting warrant summary.
All right. So the warrant closed today at 4:00 PM. I do have, we had some activity on Friday from citizens petitions. I sent that out to the board. I was going to show an update of where we are. Again, we will focus on all of this next week on April 5th, but I'll just show sort of the changes that were made late on Friday afternoon. This should be shared. So I've highlighted the items that were added. I would point out that the governance committee has submitted theirs in two articles, and so I have them here. I've taken off numbering because I don't want to confuse as these things move around. One other thing that was added since last week was the veteran tax exemption. I had a conversation with Sarah Bateman. This would fall under, would be in coordination with the Board of Assessors, so I'll bring you that information next week as well. A few items that the town planner is working with town council on as it relates to shoring up our change use regulations for changes that have had to do with marijuana. I'll bring all that back to you as well. And what we'll do second on this, number 5A, is to send something to the planning board that relates to the ZBAA Solar Amendments. And then here at the bottom, these are the two. One is that the request that came previously for the Comprehensive Long-Range Planning Committee, that's going to stay a citizen's petition at the request of petitioner, although obviously, the petitioner would like to know that she has the support of the board. Additionally, there were two citizens' requests that I've added here. One is to amend bylaw Chapter 26, Section 9, which would be to require that anybody on board the committees have email accounts issued by the town and only use that for town business. Another citizen's petition came in late Friday afternoon on amending bylaw Article 3, Section 1, to change the Select Board from a three-member to a five-member board. And so at this time, there are 38 articles. We are not receiving any more citizen's petitions at this time, and we will get into earnest next week on discussing where we are with the warrant, and I'll be getting you a draft of the warrant document.
Great. Any questions from the board on the town meeting warrant summary?
I'll have that conversation next week.
You're good.
I do have one item here with a motion that the clerk could make as it relates to the ZBAA Solar Amendments.
Why don't you go ahead with that?
Okay. I will move to send to the planning board for review and potential inclusion on the annual town meeting warrant, a potential amendment to the zoning bylaw, Section 3F2.
I'll second that.
Any questions on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Good on that, Travis?
All set. Next week, we'll be able to have a long warrant conversation.
Look forward to it. Under Board Business, number one, do you want to handle the first one, which is Lot 5 of the Finn property, Travis?
Sure. I'll just mention the Finn lot is a lot that is relatively of interest to the town for a number of reasons, as it relates to open space, recreation, schools. What has come up through 61A is that the town has the right of first refusal. So what we did was, you know, put this through a number of groups, including the Open Space Committee, Parks and Rec, and the schools, to see if there was any interest. As you can see from the map, and I won't pull it up, this particular lot is not of interest to the town. The Finn property overall is, and, you know, I think with the number of groups that are interested, certainly a conversation that we should have. I think this board plays a role in that. And so I think, you know, having this on my radar now, I certainly understand, I've had the opportunity to speak with all those groups that may be interested in the future, but at this point, I would, the recommendation would be to turn down that right of first refusal, which I've provided the motion to the clerk, but I'd be happy to answer any questions before we get into that. If you'd like.
Are there any questions regarding this particular property?
Sir, I do not have any questions.
I just have one comment. The document that was prepared by the attorney in December needs to be updated. It's got seven comments. The chair has.
It does. And it did not get to us, get to me in the time of fashion. I don't know if that's the reason, but at the same point, there's 120 days within this.
Yeah.
So it actually runs through April. Could have timed okay because the way that those deadlines are also being extended during COVID. So technically, if this was a property that was of interest to the town, it could have worked out. But again, the way that the property is situated, this particular lot faces Highland, and the sides that face Hollis and Mellon are the ones that would really be of interest to a number of groups.
All right. I have no questions on it. We've addressed my concerns, so I'll entertain a motion to approve, or in this case, express our no interest in the Lot 5 of the Finn property.
So I will move to not accept the option of first refusal under Chapter 61A on Lot 5 of the Finn property.
Or second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Carrie. Next one is you, Mr. Hearn.
Yes. So we have an agreement, we have an MOA with the Town of Ashland to provide animal control officer services to the Town of Holliston. We had that discussion in the budget. I think we're going to have probably a very long discussion on the service level as we get into more likely the FY '23 budget cycle. As it were, what they've essentially looked to add is additional services beyond the one ACO by hiring an ACO part-time person named Justine Graffy. And as you appoint the ACO, we would be looking for you to also appoint the assistant ACO. So I've also provided that motion.
Okay. Once, I do have a quick question on that. Have you reviewed her credentials?
Yes. And I apologize if I didn't put that in the packet. It seems like she would be a good fit and should be able to increase services and, you know, have a better response to a wider area.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Sparrow, if you'd like to make a motion.
I move to appoint Justine Graffy as part-time ACO for Holliston through June 30th, 2021, pursuant to the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Holliston and the Town of Ashland.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Carrie. Just to be clear, she's just good until the end of June, when all the other.
We'll just put her on that cycle.
Gotcha. All right, Ben. I think we've got one more thing from the other corner of the world.
All right.
It's meeting minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 8th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay. We've reached the end of our meeting for Board Business, typical Board Business. As we approach the 7 o'clock hour, we'll take a brief break, but rejoin at 7 o'clock, at which time I'll read the instructions for the assembled group, and we'll get underway with a presentation from CRG on the proposal up at 555 Hopping Brook. So if folks will give us above four minutes, we'll come right back. Thank you. The point of this evening is to discourage repeated messaging. We'd ask folks to honor that. The the point of this evening is to discourage repeated messaging, uh, we'd ask folks to uh, honor that in the interest of time. Uh, we'd love unique voices and and perspectives. Some folks have sent along PowerPoints, uh, deck slides prior to this evening's meeting. When they're recognized, our technology manager will bring those approved decks up for a shared view. Uh, we hope it goes smoothly this evening, we're really looking forward to having um, as much input as possible. Uh, we are gonna start this evening with representatives from CRG. Uh, these folks will have about a half an hour to forty-five minutes to bring to our board's attention, um, sort of the art, the project, what has been going on since its inception. How things have um, changed or brought them uh, to the point today where we are. And following that, the select board will have some questions. We've allotted about sixty minutes for that, um, that's a give or take, and then we'll welcome the public's input. So this evening, I believe we have representatives from CRG joining us, um, I wanted to just recognize them quickly. Uh, do I have Mr. Peter Bemis this evening?
Peter's trying to unmute himself. Good day.
Got unmuted here.
Okay, now I I I I was waiting to have permission to unmute, I have it now, so I'm here, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How are you, Peter? Thank you for joining us, uh, in your team, I believe you have uh, Mr. Scott Nylan, is that correct?
Uh, Chip Nylan, yes, Richard Nylan, he's here.
I'm sorry, Chip, and anyone else?
Uh, Scott Thornton and and Frank Bacunas from uh, CRG. And and Frank will uh, will initiate discussion. Uh, I just wanted to see that Scott was present, so can I verify that Scott has uh, audio control?
Yes, I'm getting a thumbs up from our technology director, that is the case, Peter.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor, before I bring you in to uh, introduce your um, your plan to us, I just wanted to recognize this board saw representatives of the project back in October of twenty twenty. It was a spirited discussion, um, Mr. Milonowski, I believe, brought forth some insight into terms in terms of what the project scope was, uh, the overall plan. Uh, we did have a public process where he accepted some questions, uh, both from our board and from the citizens. This is sort of a rebound to that, we understand there's been a lot of activity since then, as you would expect with a project this size. So we wanted to thank you in advance for uh, coming before this board, um, to share project updates and to help us and help our citizens understand. Uh, what this project means to them, means to them, alright? So with that, Peter, and your and your team, I'll turn it over to you. And I'll allow you to navigate who will speak from CRG during the next thirty to forty-five minutes, but the floor is yours, Mr. Bemis.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I I would like to begin with with Frank, if Frank, you could start, I appreciate that, thank you.
That that would be great, and can I confirm that everybody can hear me well?
We can, yes, thank you.
Okay, great, so Peter, would you mind putting that slide presentation up? Um, so so thank you and good evening, um, my name is Frank Bacunas and I uh, I represent CRG in the Northeast US. And as you probably know by now, we're the uh, contract purchaser for the site. And we've been working on getting approvals for this project for a while now, actually since uh, late two thousand nineteen, mid to late two thousand nineteen. So I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about who we are, what we do, and maybe add some additional context to the project. Um, so as you mentioned, the last time you were briefed on this project was back in October of twenty. And at that time, the uh, the current owner of the property was was front and center. And that was really a function of their long history with the site and the past knowledge that that comes with that. But we thought that it might be more informative if we supplement that historical owner vantage point with a developer's um, vantage point. And uh, that's basically why I'm here tonight. Now, notwithstanding the fact that the focus tonight is on traffic, I figured it might be helpful if I told you very briefly about CRG. And also frame our interest in the site and how we got from there, you know, August of two thousand nineteen to here, March of twenty twenty-one. So so Peter, starting on that first slide, um, very simply, CRG is a a real estate investment company that that builds in four main categories. Um, we build multifamily, we build commercial, we build institutional, and we build industrial product. Um, we're national in scope, we have headquarters in both Chicago and St. Louis. But we implement projects on a regional basis with with market offices in just about all the major cities. If you can advance the slide, Peter. And this is a a snapshot of the the structure of the company, we we have three main branches, those being CRG, the development arm within which I work. We have LJC, which is our design firm, and we have Claygo, which is our construction firm. And so what's good about this this trio structure, if you will, is it allows us to control all aspects of the the process. And it also allows us to negate complications that otherwise arise if we used outside firms such as. Ensuring that construction protocols are compliant with restrictions imposed such as noise and hours and things of that nature. Uh, if you can advance, Peter. Um, this slide summarizes our historical metrics, you know, we've been doing this for quite a long time. And uh, we have a long history and knowledge of these these product categories, so we're we're well capable of seeing a project of this magnitude through. We're well capitalized, we've seen these things before, so you can rest assured that we we've done these. Um, if you can advance, Peter. So, you know, with all of that said, one of the main questions I've heard numerous times from board members and and citizens is, who's gonna be in the building? And and the answer to that question is, we don't know yet because this development is speculative, and everybody's heard that term speculative from us. So I I use an analogy and say that it's very similar to a home builder who doesn't yet know who his end buyer is. But designs and bills in the hope that somebody will like the product and buy it. And it's very similar here. And the reason that we have to build speculatively, particularly now, is that with the type of clients we have. Um, operational interruptions have disastrous effects. So basically, tenants won't commit to leaseholds until the risk of delivery inclusive of. Things like permitting processes and construction processes are gone from the from from the overall project. In other words, they want to see the the building up and standing before they commit to lease it. So although we don't know who the tenant will be, we do know the types of businesses that will traditionally lease our buildings. And those businesses operate, as you'd expect, reflective of these bulleted characteristics, and you've probably heard these before. You know, storage and distribution of consumer goods, twenty-four hour operation, traffic further projections in our studies. And employees at a maximum of five hundred, and that employee maximum is kind of, that's really dictated by the sum, the the size of our SAS system as it's designed. So Peter, if you can advance the slide. Um, more specifically, um, you can see the types of tenants that might occupy the building, so it. It could be household goods, it could be clothing, it could be dry goods, beverages, candy, but again, consistent with the use proposed. You can advance again, Peter. So our interest in this site, in this project, has evolved over the last year and a half. And 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 here's a chronology of the past, long before our arrival. But our interest started quite simply because the site had a MIPA approval in place. And we thought, we'll never generate those numbers, those impacts to the community allowed under the existing MIPA, so we should give this a shot. So we looked at those MIPA numbers, um, we looked at the zoning category being industrial, we looked at how long this site sat undeveloped. You can see that it sat for thirty years in a lull before farmer can came along. We looked at the design parameters, um, and we thought there's absolutely no way that would ever utilize the traffic or infrastructure capital. The the traffic or infrastructure vastly allowed under the MIPA, ever. So in other words, would be a lot less impactful than that which was approved. Um, so we went ahead and we got our site plan approval, and that's an approval to construct the uh, site work necessary for an eight hundred thousand square foot warehouse. We then got our health department permits, we got our conservation commission permits, we got our MIPA compliance. Uh, we got our section sixty-one finding from Mass DOT, we even got a variance from the ZBA to breach the maximum height of the building by ten feet. And then everything stopped. Um, and and it stopped because some residents had questions about the impact of this project on the area, which is very reasonable. Um, but those concerns didn't recognize how less impactful this development would be compared to that which was approved under the existing MIPA. So we've been working to answer questions, um, we did a number of revisions to the traffic study and had those. Findings vetted by an independent third party representing the town. Um, we did a number of noise studies showing that the noise generated by this particular use would be compliant with all local and state federal regulations. Those findings were again, corroborated by uh, the town's consultant. And so if you would, Peter, advance. So in the in the process of listening and answering all those questions, we thought. Let's redesign the site a bit and and offer some site design changes that would mitigate impact. And and most of those are listed here, um, we're now installing thirty-foot-high berms with an eight-foot fence on top of that and evergreens on top. Um, we reduced the number of trailer parking spaces, we moved the building a hundred and fifty feet further from the property line than what I believe you saw last time. Um, but most importantly, we we're offering to limit the traffic impact by placing a maximum on trips. And we're also offering to install monitoring devices to ensure compliance, so. In the interest of time, I mean, I'll I'll stop now and hand it off to our engineers to talk about traffic, but. The overall message here is that we're trying to offer the town a less impactful alternative to what was planned for this site. And if that means accepting imposed conditions to move us past the the current debates about our technical reports and. The accuracy and 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 all of that stuff, we're certainly willing to do so. So, you know, we're still listening, we're still answering questions, we're still thinking of ways to solve all the issues that people bring up. Um, but it's certainly impossible to do that, but we've made great strides in in changing our plans to really accommodate a lot of the the concerns that were raised. So I can stop there and entertain questions for the board, or I can give it right to you, Peter, and have you continue with traffic, I think it's more so the latter.
Peter, we're fine with you and your team proceeding with the next um, form of presentation in in order to economize our time. And we'll we'll get to our questions afterwards.
And Peter, if you're speaking, I think you're on mute because we cannot hear you.
Well, uh, this is, this is Scott Thornton with Vanessen Associates, uh, I'm the traffic engineer for the project and. Um, since my slides are up now, I figure I might as well uh, proceed. Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for hearing, for hearing us tonight. Um, as as Frank mentioned, uh, we have, we have prepared the traffic study, we have revised. Uh, this study, there have been a number of of various um, uh, traffic analyses that have been prepared for the project. Um, you know, we started with an estimate of traffic which was which was increased, and then it was increased again. Uh, and then increased again to test the Washington Street, Hopping Brook Road intersection design. Um. We prepared these analyses, uh, which were reviewed by Mass DOT. Um, and also reviewed by the town's peer consultant, MDM, who I believe is is also present tonight. Um, and, you know, we. I think but total, there's been a total of approximately three, three traffic studies with uh, with with modifications along the way in each instance. Um, but, you know, in each, the 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 goal is the same, we're we're working with the town and the state to identify the impacts. And address the effects of the project, and we're, you know, our goal is to avoid the impacts to downtown. Um, the current traffic pattern at at the Hopping Brook Road. And Washington Street intersection is expected to be the same for the project, we're proposing a traffic signal to improve operations of that intersection. Signage is also proposed to direct vehicles to the site. And traffic monitoring is designed to ensure compliance and make sure vehicles avoid South Street and the downtown. And, you know, this is, as Frank had mentioned, there are a couple critical points, not least of which is. Is that backstop of thirteen hundred and ten daily vehicles, uh, which which will be monitored as part of an ongoing program. That will continue to be reviewed once the project is occupied and operating. Uh, Peter, if you could, if you could go to the next. So, so the these are the analyses, some of the the IT data that was reviewed for for the project. And there was, there were initially a study done using Florida Department of Transportation methodology. For the proposed CRG site of eight hundred thousand square feet. And there was traditional um, land use code one fifty warehouse use for eight hundred thousand square feet. And then uh, for the second phase or the remaining buildout of the Hopping Brook Park. An additional seven hundred thousand square feet was was tacked on, which is not the subject of this of this parcel. And then, as requested by the town's peer consultant, we also looked at the at a possible use of uh, industrial park. Or trips associated with industrial park for seven hundred thousand for the remaining buildout and also for. For the total of of the, assuming that the CRG site of eight hundred thousand square feet. And the remaining buildout of seven hundred thousand square feet would generate trips similar to both the warehousing parcel and. Similar to an industrial park of land use code one thirty. And those industrial park analyses were requested by the town's peer consultant for a two-phase sensitivity analysis. Again, to test the intersection of Hopping Brook Road with Washington Street and the signal design there. And the net result is that the town's peer consultant and Mass DOT are both satisfied with the analysis results. The next slide shows sort of a comparisons of the of the trip projections, and again, this is for the current phase. Under review, the CRG parcel, eight hundred thousand square foot warehouse. Um. Actually, uh, Peter, did we, did we jump a slide? Is there, is there a slide before this one?
I I think I saw a slide jump when he was speaking, Scott.
Yeah, okay, so there we go, that's it, thank you. So so the, and I'll I'll try to speed up because I know we've we've, our our time is short, but um. But the park was, as Frank mentioned, the park was initially approved for three million square feet through MIPA for office and R and D industrial uses. So those trips associated with that level of development was between seventeen thousand nine hundred and four and thirty-six thousand nine hundred daily trips as reported in MIPA filings. So the current phase, which is again, not the full buildout, but the CRG phase, is for eight hundred thousand square feet. Which brings the park to approximately one point five million square feet. The Hopping Brook Road traffic currently is three thousand four hundred fifty-six daily trips. The warehouse use of thirteen hundred and ten daily trips, again, that's that number that the that CRG is committed to. You add those together, that gets the park forecast of four thousand seven hundred sixty-six daily trips, which is between a seventy-three percent and an eighty-seven percent. Reduction from the MIPA trips noted above. And we put in the calculations here just to, just to be clear that there is, there's, this is the math, it's just, you know, standard percentage change calculations. And the the net result is that you got a decreasing rate of building area and traffic generation. With fewer impacts and trips that were initially proposed and approved through MIPA. So the next slide shows, just kind of takes that to another level. Uh, identifying the the roadway traffic levels that that we are anticipated with the current phase as compared with what was. What was approved through the MIPA project, so. So again, this is for the eight hundred thousand square foot CRG phase, and it, we're, we're, we note that it represents a reduction in traffic from. The approved and expected level of development through MIPA, resulting in a reduction in traffic increases otherwise expected. We looked at the traffic volumes both west and east of Hopping Brook Road. And west of Hopping Brook Road, the daily traffic level is about seventeen thousand six hundred vehicles per day. East of Hopping Brook Road, it's about sixteen thousand one hundred vehicles per day. And again, these these counts are, were conducted prior to the emergence of the COVID pandemic, uh, they were conducted in two thousand nineteen. So there's no issues associated with with COVID, effects of COVID traffic volumes at these traffic volumes. Uh, so, so in terms of the the comparison, you know, the boxes on the left and the right and the middle, we're looking at the. Uh, use, again, using the same distribution that currently exists at the intersection, both with the with the project. at the intersection, both with the project traffic volume and with the MEPA traffic volume. And going to the left, to the west, we would expect the project to result in an increase of 917 daily trips, which brings the total volume to 18,517 and a change of about 5.2%. And this is west of Hopping Brook Road. Contrast that with the MEPA-approved traffic volumes, which resulted in an increase of 10,409 daily trips. New volume of 28,009 vehicles for a change of 59.1%. Similarly, on the east side of the intersection, where you've got 16,100 daily vehicles currently, with the project, you would have 393, increasing a total of 16,493 vehicles per day, which represents a 2.4% change from what's there now. And contrast that with the MEPA-approved volumes of 4,461 vehicles per day on that side of the intersection, an increase of 20,500 for a change of 27.7%. And again, the math is down below, and it's the same calculations that we've, that we reviewed previously and that have been in the reports. Going to the next slide, talking about traffic operations, the town, the project is going to be installing a traffic signal at Hopping Brook Road that provides gaps in the Washington Street traffic. So that makes it easier for vehicles in the vicinity of the intersection to get in and out of Washington Street traffic. It's not expected to, you know, it's not going to create gaps half a mile or a mile down the road, but certainly in the vicinity of the intersection, it will be easier to get in and out of driveways with those, with a traffic signal stopping traffic on Washington Street. In terms of additional study, there is a requirement from the state to perform an expanded traffic study looking at 12 intersections as part of the signal sign. This is the same study area that was reviewed in previous MEPA filings for the project. It includes the Exit 20 interchange and the Exit 19 interchange with 495 and a number of the intersections between there and on Fortune Boulevard. It also goes east to look at intersections with Route 16 intersections with Route 126 headed east into Holliston. So, this study will address impacts from this phase, the CRG phase, and the full buildout of the park. And that's a requirement of the design to go forward. So they can't advance the design without completing this traffic study, which is, again, expected to commence shortly. So, this requirement for this study, as well as continuing traffic monitoring, provides opportunities for the state and town to assess project impacts. It provides a backstop for review of the project to make sure that the project's traffic generation and impacts are consistent with the expectations that were laid out in the traffic study and in the various traffic studies that were prepared. The next slide goes into a little more detail on the mitigation in terms of signalization of the Hopping Brook Road-Washington Street intersection. We're also looking at weight-finding signage that would increase the, or that would identify the routes for the project, and a monitoring program looking at trip generation counts of the site driveway, compliance counts of the, of a few of the intersections in the area, and also tracking counts to make sure that we're not, that the traffic is staying, again, where we expect it to and being directed away from locations that we don't want it to go to. So, in general, you know, the state and the town's peer consultant have approved the traffic analysis for this CRG phase, and the phase of development represents a significant reduction in traffic levels for the park. The increases are, to Washington Street, are between 2.4 and 5.2% compared with the MEPA-approved traffic levels of between 27.7 and 59.1% on a daily basis. Traffic studies will be ongoing beyond the current phase to identify the traffic impact of the park as the next phase proposed. And traffic monitoring, as identified by the state and the town's peer consultant, will be implemented for the current phase and for the future buildout of the park. I think that's it. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer questions or turn it back over to Peter.
I think what we'll do, if it's okay with you, Scott, you will be a feature, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
So why don't you grab a cup of water or something, and we'll circle back to Peter to, you know, continue and move forward with the rest of your presentation. We'll get all your points out, and then we'll go to the questions. Peter, you're up.
Okay, thank you. And I got my control on my microphone. I had lost that part of my screen, so I have it back, so thank you for that. So I wanted to also bring in, because we didn't do this independently, we did this with a consultant, which is Vaness, for the traffic, and then that had to be vetted, both for the town and then the state would have their agencies looking at this. So I did ask MDM to be able to participate in this because they were an integral part of some of the decision-making in how this project was put together through the review with the planning board. So if the IT person could unmute Bob Micho, I believe Bob is in attendance, we can talk about the review that is from him as well for this project.
I am here, just confirming, Mr. Chair, that I'm here. Thank you.
So, Bob, I know we spoke the other day about the mitigation measures to include a monitoring program, and CRG is willing to make that investment at the signalized intersection with either the MyoVision or the, I'm trying to remember the name of the other one. I'm not a traffic engineer, but, so you can mention the other firm, GridSmart, I think it was. Right. Right. And then we talked about doing that at the intersection, we talked about having a monitoring system at our driveway at Hopping Brook Road, and also in the event that the town cannot secure a weight restriction on South Street, which we are committed to supporting and actually being engaged in, we would also put a separate monitoring system at that intersection to ensure that none of our vehicles are using that roadway system. So, Bob, with that, if you could just explain how your firm has looked at this project as well, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Apparently, again, through the chair, Robert Micho, the managing principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. So, our firm has actually reviewed two iterations of the submittal for this particular site, and most recently, in our second iteration, had requested, as Mr. Thornton had indicated, some sensitivity analysis to give us comfort in our review that the maximum potential extent of impact could be identified, not only for the proposed project, but for the eventual buildout of the park. And the applicant's engineer, Vaness and Associates, has done that analysis. We're comfortable with the findings of that analysis, presents the appropriate bracket, if you will, of potential impact for the project, and confirms, in our view, that the proposed mitigation, which is the signalized intersection at Hopping Brook Road, is appropriate and nevertheless will also be subject to ongoing Mass DOT review and approval. In that regard, my firm does a lot of industrial development. We've monitored a number of industrial properties, particularly over the last couple of years, and we're comfortable that the representations that relate to this site and its potential operations are accurate relative to our experience with that type of a land use, the industrial land use. And we know that there are a number of different iterations of how that's defined, depending on who the actual tenant is. But again, we're comfortable that the bracketed high and low traffic scenarios present an appropriate basis for the finding by the town and the associated information. As it relates to the potential conditions that Vaness and the applicant have indicated, and that is restricting the site to a certain number of trips per day, we have direct experience with that, actually, working with the town of Westford on the Newport Materials industrial property, for the very same reasons as are being discussed here, in that there is a commitment by an applicant to cap the amount of traffic activity that could be associated with their particular site. And the ability to monitor that becomes a fundamental issue should such a condition be imposed, you know, restricting the use and how much it can actually generate. We have experience with a number of different technologies that would allow that monitoring to take place to ensure that those conditions are met. The two technologies that were mentioned, GridSmart and MyoVision, are two examples of that mitigate, of the technology that exists that could be installed, not only at the traffic signal itself at Hopping Brook, but also at the site itself, that would allow for both video and database information to be stored, collected and stored, and eventually compared to those thresholds. As it relates to monitoring of where that traffic goes, particularly truck traffic, and we're very well aware of the sensitivity of access to the South Street quarter in particular by commercial vehicles, there are protocols that could be used in that regard to actually monitor, based on license plate reading technology, where those commercial trucks are actually going and which they're associated with. So we're comfortable that appropriate protocols could be designed and implemented that would allow for that monitoring to occur, again, to ensure the compliance with the condition as it might be contemplated by the town through the planning board. I'm glad to answer any specific questions that the board has, but that's the outcome of our analysis to date. We documented that in written format to plan and that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Peter, anyone else from your group files when you speak this evening?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just thought that before I stopped the screen share, I would at least just let the board know what this site looks like, so you at least have some familiarity of what this will look like in the park. I know you're concentrating on traffic, which is more of an off-site issue, but this is what our site looks like. And as you can see here, the entrance road is here coming off of Hopping Brook Road. I think my screen's a bit skewed here, but this is the building. The berm that Bob had described to you is running around the entire project here. That berm would be extended as additional sites within the park were developed to the west. And I'd be happy to bring this exhibit up later if need be. So I thank you for that opportunity, and remain available here to answer any questions. I'll stop the screen share now.
All right, thanks, Peter. Thanks to your team. We appreciate you taking a few minutes to bring this board up to speed on the changes, the development of the project to date. Before we open it up to board questions, I just wanted to introduce to those assembled Mr. Jay Talaman, Attorney Jay Talaman. He's town council, he's on the line. Folks from CRG know him. He's been omnipotent, I believe, in all of the meetings associated with the planning board. Jay's obviously our counsel, but I've asked him tonight to also act as an umpire. He's going to call balls and strikes because this board does not seek, nor is it interested in hearing any arguments this evening relative to the planning board's role. That's a separate elected board, that's their job, we're not going to step on their toes. There's been a lot of conversation, development and sharing of information with that board, so we're going to rely on Jay to make sure that there isn't going to be any kind of crossover that would cloud that line. There is a natural overlap, and we all acknowledge that, but I think this evening we can reasonably discuss that. In the event we find ourselves in jeopardy, Jay, just call the ball, call the strike as you see it, okay? Thanks, Jay. So we're going to start with questions from the board. We'll start with Mr. Sparrow, Ben Sparrow. Good evening.
Good evening. No pressure on me, right?
None at all. Fire away.
Okay, so, thank you to CRG for the presentation and the folks, get everybody right, there's Scott and Bob, so I appreciate you taking some time to explain a few things. Some of my questions actually related to monitoring, which is interesting here, but I do have a couple, like, preliminary questions, and I apologize if they are perhaps rudimentary, but for my own edification, I just would like to ask them as we go forward. As the tenant comes in, CRG continues to own the building, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, but obviously, the tenant would be paying the taxes and any relevant, anything to the town, correct?
Well, usually, the way the lease is structured is we're obligated as the owner of the building to pay those taxes, and the tenant would reimburse us, depending on what kind of lease agreement we come to. But the tax bill comes to us, we pay the tax bill.
Gotcha, okay. And then, and you would be responsible for the maintenance of the building, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, you know, so not knowing the tenant, I think, is an issue in general. And sort of my 30,000-foot view of this whole situation, as I've been thinking about this for the past few days, getting ready for this particular meeting, is that I think what's incredibly frustrating about not knowing the tenant and having this kind of relationship with you and CRG is we're a small town who wants to know our neighbors, and we don't know who is going to be occupying this building. And it feels a little frustrating to go through this exercise with CRG, and then we probably have to go through it again with the tenant, in effect, to sort of understand how they use the building. And I come to that because different kinds of tenants would use the building in different kinds of ways. I mean, I, so, just so for understanding, I work with a food broker in my, in the private sector, and we work with distributors, and one of the distributors will do something like have appointments for trucks to come in to maintain the, how the docks are being used, and sometimes trucks will get there early and sit in idle on the road. And that's a different kind of use than, say, last mile or, you know, whatever's being done with a particular kind of distribution. So, you know, it's hard because 1310 might be a nice number that everybody, that some people really like, but that 1310 could be very different depending on who it is in that building. So it presents a challenge, as far as I'm concerned, to fully feel comfortable with everything until we know who's actually going to be doing the occupation of the building. So with that in mind, off my little soapbox there for a second, I do want to talk about that restriction, that 1310 trips per day, and, you know, what some of my questions had to relate it to, who was doing the monitoring? It sounds like, if I get it right, MDM, Bob's firm there, Bob Micho's firm, would be the ones doing the monitoring, is that correct?
Well, I'll let the pros answer.
Yeah, that hasn't been determined. I mean, we certainly do that for cities and towns. We've acted as an independent review agent for the town. We'd be glad to do that. We have experience designing and implementing monitoring programs, but that hasn't been formally decided.
Okay.
If I may, Chip Nylund Council for the applicant, we believe that that would be a permit condition that would be issued by the planning board that would outline the responsibilities of the owner for a third-party review, a third-party monitoring. So I think that we're not at that stage, but we would anticipate that it would be a third party that would be responsible for the monitoring and not the owner.
Okay. And is that monitoring, would that be, they be speaking to CRG, were they speaking to the town, speaking to both? Who are they reporting to? Like, depends on the agreement, right?
Again, Chip Nylund, yeah. I would imagine at first we would establish a protocol that was acceptable to the planning board, and then we would establish a periodic, a number, say, starting after occupancy, and then, you know, weeks, months, six months or whatever, to have target dates where we could report that back, and that information would be submitted directly to the planning board because they're the issuing authority of the permit.
Gotcha, okay, so that would go to the planning board. Okay, I understand. So I did want to have, I did have a couple other questions about pivoting to sustainability. These are some general questions. I know about how that impacts, I mean, it might be beyond us, but I want to ask a couple of questions about it. Is, you know, so- be beyond us, but I want to ask a couple of questions about it. Is, you know, so the state is talking about 2050 having carbon neutrality in towns. Is is CRG doing anything in this particular case to establish some level of emission reduction or working towards that goal to help the town do that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I just thinking specifically that conditions already imposed. I mean, you know, light pollution, we're we're, I think we're obligated to provide dark sky compliant lighting. I think there's also a condition that we have to install a number of electric car charging stations. So a lot of those are already stipulated in the conditions imposed upon us while we got our site plan done. Over and above that, you know, we we strive for sustainability and we've got corporate standards for building to lead standards. So, you know, whether it be, you know, LEED certified, LEED gold, LEED platinum, whatever it may be, a lot of our tenants look for that also. So this is sort of a holistic effort that you see, not just by a developer, but by the tenants who lease our buildings. And again, if you can sort of imagine what my slide looked like with the type of tenants that lease our buildings, these are Fortune 500 guys. They're not, you know, mom and pop guys that really don't care about things like this. So corporate standards usually have that embedded in their own requirements, as do we.
Okay. Are you planning to build any refrigeration on this in this facility?
No.
Okay. And but there will obviously be some level of climate control for the entire facility, correct?
Less than you'd think. I mean, we're more concerned about heating than cooling. So we very infrequently air condition our buildings, but it's not out of the question. We always heat them for obvious reasons. We don't want sprinklers to freeze. So we maintain, you know, about 50 degrees in the building at a zero outside ambient. But as far as cooling, seldom do we cool the buildings.
Okay. Is there any, will there be any automation that's going to be added? Do you know?
I don't really foresee it, to tell you the truth. I mean, there's, of all the tenants that I've done business with over the last seven years, there's one or two that actually implement the type of automation that you're probably imagining in your mind and it's the it's the tenant that nobody wants and tenants that have gone on record by saying is not and will not come to this site. So, no.
Okay. Okay. And is there is there going to be, I mean, you mentioned electronic charging station. Will there be any fuel onsite, like fuel, the gas state pumps?
No, we specifically prohibit that in all of our leases just because of our own environmental liability. So, you know, a number of things working in favor of clean operational standards. Number one, a big, big company like ours that doesn't want to get in any trouble, right? And so kind of introduce and stress the the concept of ongoing compliance to say, whatever happens, you know, we're still obligated to comply with every law out there. And if anything goes awry, it gets fixed very quickly. But the short answer is no, there would be no fuel stored onsite.
Okay. And if the truck, if there's no fuel onsite, where would the trucks fuel?
Which trucks? The trucks coming to the site delivering goods?
Well, I mean, you know, are the trucks, so where would they go? Like if they've just emptied their truck and they need to go get fuel, are they, where are they going?
They could be 50, 100, 200 miles away. So a lot of the product would come in from, let's say, Chicago or Allentown, Pennsylvania, anywhere along their route they would fuel. They wouldn't fuel, they wouldn't fuel onsite.
Okay. Well, I'm just concerned, just I'm asking the question just because I'm just concerned, you know, that they're, you know, if they come out and they want to get fuel, are they going to go start driving through our community looking for a gas pump?
No, highly doubtful. I mean, those guys, those guys congregate around what you would expect. You know, the big truck stop type of places on interstate highways that accommodate, you know, meals, gas, showers, fixing flat tires, those sort of things.
All right. So the last thing I just have to say, I'm just going to make a comment here. So I just want to say to the residents of the town, thank you for all the passion and conviction you have to come to things like this and to express your opinions. And I I want to give everybody a piece of advice and a request, and that's to stay engaged and participate no matter what happens with this project. You know, continue to show your support or concern and come to town meeting and, you know, this project, you know, we might never see another one like it, but, you know, you it's important that the community continue to stay engaged and make sure that the bylaws of this town reflect our values. And I just want to say that, that, you know, going forward, this, you know, this is a process, this is one step in a process, not necessarily related to this particular project. And it's important that people continue to participate and join us in democracy. I'm a volunteer, so are the two people next to me. We volunteer to do this because we love this town. I think it's important and we're glad that you love this town too. And we want what's best for it. So please, let's, you know, let's let's continue to engage and to do other things after this process is concluded. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Ben. Tina?
Oh, thank you. So I have a couple of comments and questions. So bear with me. At the November 18th meeting, Mr. Malinowski, with Mr. Malinowski, expressed concern about the use of an ITE code other than 156. That still remains a significant omission in my mind in the current studies. I believe this project is all about trucks to a large extent. And moving away from an original plan that was dated back in January of 2020 to use an ITE code of 155 or 156, really misses that point in my mind. However, tonight I'd like to present other areas of concern for CRG to consider and address. I understand you may not have answers for all of my comments or questions tonight, and I hope that you'll be willing to return at a later date with responses if if necessary. The first question that I have is in regards to scope and scale of the project. Last or two weeks ago, you presented to the planning board a facility in Taunton, and I believe you had their economic development chair, Mr. Schaefer, come and talk about the use of the site. It's a Jordan's Furniture site, if I recall correctly. I believe that Taunton, the Taunton facility was allowed for 24/7 use. It was permitted for by right. But that CRG's Taunton facility is occupied by a tenant who operates with a less intensive use than 24/7. So my question is, among CRG's portfolio Fortune 500 companies, do all of your potential tenants or do any of your potential tenants for this proposed facility require 24/7?
Yes, they all do, including Jordan's Furniture. They operate 24 hours a day. So I did see a question like this come through the planning board, or I think somebody went on Google and possibly Googled the the Jordan's Furniture in Taunton, in which case they would see operating hours listed to that particular facility. So I've had conversations with with the Jordan's people and their response to that was, no, no, no. We offer customer pickup for orders placed in our retail stores and those hours are only for one or two dock doors for the public to pick up orders. But that 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 building does operate, in fact, 24 hours a day, the warehouse operation does. They run three.
Okay. Thank you. I understand you correctly. Then you're saying that any future potential client or tenant for this proposed site in Holliston will require 24/7 use?
I can't say 100%, but we wouldn't build a building unless we're allowed to do so. So you you understand that most of our tenants say, hey, look, we need to be able to at least operate inside the building. And if we lease a building from you and you only allow us to use it for half of the day, then we're going to give you half of the rent. And that particular rent doesn't justify the expenditure to build a building. So basically, if we can't operate 24/7, the building won't be built. Just because of that, you know, if I build a building and I've got restricted operating hours, then my tenant base grows from like this to this, to this many people who would actually accept those operating hour restrictions. Yes.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. So we are expecting state feedback on best practices for addressing the traffic impact of development within our industrial parks. So I just want to speak for a minute about site selection. I imagine CRG has quite a rigorous process in terms of selecting a site. And I want to highlight, excuse me, I'll highlight a couple characteristics about this site that do seem to stand out in contrast with other CRG sites. So you have a 2.3-mile designated truck route. It's primarily zoned residential for that entire stretch, not entirely, but primarily. The designated truck route is single lane, narrow shoulders and an absence of sidewalks. The designated truck route is state owned and operated, but has a decade plus without state funded surface roadway improvements. These challenges make it difficult to see how Holliston is a good choice for CRG. And so I'm wondering why, why this scope, why this scale? So 24/7, 800,000 square feet, why this scope and scale in Holliston?
Okay, so the the short introductory answer to that would be because of the macro location. So if you look at where Holliston is located, VSAV, interstates like 495 and 90, it offers a good macro location. So there have been a lot of our clients that basically said, hey, look, if you can find us a building near some of the interstates or find a site near the interstates in the Boston metropolitan area would be interesting in leasing space from you. So that's kind of the macro first step. But, you know, we picked this site first because it's zoned for industrial use, right? And that's usually indicative of the township's desire to accommodate industrial use on the property. But our reasons for like for selecting this site are many. The zoning was appropriate, the site was available. That's always a big site, site selection criterion, meaning the owner would be willing to sell it to us. The topography on this particular site is, believe it or not, even though it's it's a slope and it does have subterranean rock grata, it's a lot better than other sites that we've seen around the Massachusetts area. And it fits within what we think of the criteria we hear from our clients, right? Different regions have different criteria. If you go to Topeka, Kansas, or let's say suburban Denver, a lot of the, a lot of the tenants would say, well, you know what, we can be 200 miles out from from the population because there isn't that much congestion and we can really get on the highways and we're not going to be impeded by tollways. It's different everywhere you go. But in the Northeast, basically, we look for industrially zoned sites, first of all. Second of all, we look at, you know, construction costs associated with those. And then we look at all the other things that I had mentioned in my my opening remarks to say, look, we looked at all these qualifying, you know, sort of metrics on this particular site and I saw all of these approvals for all of this traffic and it just looked good to me. So those are the main parameters that we use and that's why this became attractive to us.
Fair to say then that the 2.3-mile route was not one of those assets?
No. I mean, so a lot of times our sites are located near highways, but, you know, people have heard me say that I'm, I just completed three projects. I've got, I've got one in, look at my notes here. I've got one in Manchester, Pennsylvania, that's 3.82 miles from the highway. I've got one in Bath, Pennsylvania, that's 4.32 miles from the highway. I've got one in Conawago Township, Pennsylvania, that's almost five miles from the interchange. So, you know, if you look at this one, it's about three miles from the interchange and Taunton is, Taunton is, I don't know, one and a half or two miles. So it's not necessarily something that we look at at a list. We don't say, well, how long or how far is this from the highway? If it's zoned and we can put a building on it and the tenants think, okay, that's good for us, then it's, it meets, it meets our objective.
Okay. So you don't look at the characteristics of the road or the type of, you know, width or density or zoning along the route? Okay. So I do have a question. We don't need to answer it tonight, but I'm not sure if the District 3 Highway Director has provided input on the vehicular access permit. I haven't seen that yet. If you have any information on that, if you would be willing to share it. I know that the Section 61 finding is out there. But I understand that the vehicular access permit requires District 3 Highway Director to have some input. So at some future date, maybe we can get a look at that if it's been provided. So I just want to come back to the Van Ass study. You made it clear, Mr. Thornton, thank you, that trucks will be turning. I've heard this in previous presentations as well, that it's anticipated that the truck traffic is going to turn west out of Hopping Brook Road and head down to the I-95 interchange. And you you actually have in your study the anticipated change that you expect of 917 vehicles per day heading west out of Hopping Brook as opposed to 393 heading east. I get it, that totals 310. My question is this. You did not provide, or I cannot find at least, information about the percent, the volume rather, of truck traffic in those existing conditions. So if you're saying to us, which I believe you have, that all truck traffic will turn west out of Hopping Brook and turn to nine, head down to I-95, we have traffic counts from a mass DOT location west of Hopping Brook before you get to that interchange, Beaver Street, Fortune Boulevard, that puts the trucks per day at 236. So the trips generated that will be truck traffic are, I believe they've been reported to be anticipated 360-ish, forgive me if the number's not quite right. If all of that's heading west, it would certainly look as if the new volume of trucks per day heading west towards I-95 is going to increase by 136%. So I appreciate the 5.2% increase that you're talking about in total vehicular volume or trips per day out of this project, but I just haven't seen it broken down yet by volume of trucks existing and projected. And as I mentioned before, I really think that this project is all about trucks. And I say that because truck noise, diesel emissions, rather, road wear and tear, they they significantly impact residential areas, which, you know, this route is primarily residential, significantly impact that more than cars. So I'd really like to see Van Ass data that compares existing truck volume west of Hopping Brook to the changes that are anticipated with the projected truck counts from this project. I'd also like to see new projected truck volumes west of Hopping Brook as a percent of total volume because that's significant too. We see that in town. We have local roads that are experiencing truck volumes that are far above 5% to 8%. I think that's an important number. So if it's possible to get that comparison, I think that'd be, that'd be really helpful. I'd really like to see a new traffic study, and you've alluded to one, that looks at those intersections along the designated truck routes west to Interstate 495 as well as east through downtown Holliston. And, you know, if I had it my way, it was a perfect world, I'd like to see that before the special permit was being considered by the planning board. I know I don't have a say in that. I'm just putting out my my wish list there. So I'm going to move on to monitoring and enforcement. I believe in the recommendations for the traffic monitoring program, there's talk about either the GridSmart or the other technology. My question is, does it produce legally enforceable actions like tickets or, I suppose, worst case, revocation of a CDL license? I think that's for either Mr. Michaud or Mr. Thornton.
This is Bob. To be clear, the monitoring that we're indicating through either GridSmart or MyoVision type technology really would comprise data collection by those technologies, both in video and in tabular format, that would allow the selected consultant that's responsible for the monitoring to to be able to quantify whether or not the conditions or restrictions that exist are being complied with, right? So if the daily trip number is one of those constraints in in conditions, that tabular data would corroborate whether or not that number was being exceeded, right? And the video could be used as a supplement to that to to determine and confirm that the data, the tabulated data is correct. It is not technology as they would use in other states to automatically generate a ticket, for instance. You know, so it it's information that would be collected and then tabulated and and reviewed by this consultant, whoever that might be.
Okay. So in the, in the, excuse me, in the assumption then that no trucks turn east, this traffic monitoring program does not offer that ability for the town of Holliston to then enforce trucks that might squeak out and turn right, right? Is that what, am I understanding you correctly? That's not what this traffic monitoring program would offer?
There's actually two levels of monitoring. So one level of monitoring is how much traffic activity in total is being generated, whether it's vehicular, passenger vehicles or or trucks. That's the 1,300 number. The second part of the monitoring is understanding first, which vehicles would be generated exclusively and specifically to this this site. And secondly, for those vehicles, what are their destinations? What are they turning left versus right at the driveway? And even beyond there, if a truck is turning left, is it then proceeding to westbound route? Or are they making a left turn onto South Street? Right? So the technologies that we've indicated would allow the tracking of those vehicles for that purpose. And again, as part of a monitor monitoring protocol, the the And again, as part of a monitor monitoring protocol, the the analyst, if you will, the consultant would be able to discern whether or not commercial truck activity specifically associated with this use is turning left versus right and whether or not any portion of the trucks turning left would be using South Street. So that, we're not saying that there aren't trucks that currently either use South Street or or turn right to go to the downtown area. That probably currently occurs. Some portion of the commercial truck activity that currently uses South Street, and we've anecdotally heard that that happens, may or may not be associated with Hoppingbrook. We don't know that. But one of the starting points to the monitoring is to develop baseline traffic conditions. So prior to any monitoring, there would need to be a documentation of vehicle types and and vehicle splits, left versus right, for instance, that are currently being generated by the park, as well as for activity that's currently using South Street. So that establishes a so-called baseline against which the monitoring can be compared.
Okay, so it's a limit of this technology, then, to think that in real time it will produce the ability to enforce what's being, what's being suggested here, which is no trucks turn right out of Hoppingbrook. The the limit of the technology would be that you you couldn't in real time enforce that?
It it would be difficult in to instantaneously do that. But I think the monitoring protocol, you know, as as a practical matter, would would be structured in a way that allowed for periodic monitoring of what those vehicle splits are, for instance, so that you can periodically check what the the patterns actually look like. But the the value of the video information is that, to the extent, let's just say residents of South Street are saying, gee, there's a lot more commercial truck activity happening on our street, what's going on? There could be a call out to whoever the consultant is to say, gee, can you can you actually look at video from that period of time and make a determination as to whether or not that's related to the subject property? So we we actually use that methodology right now in the monitoring program that we have established in the town of Westford, which is the new materials project that I mentioned to you. There's a continual collection of video information that extends for at least a ninety-day period of time so that, to the extent an incident or a trend becomes apparent and an inquiry is made, that you can review that ninety-day period of time to determine whether or not there's been an issue that's specific to the project. So there's, to answer your question, instantaneous enforcement, probably not. But certainly, a monitoring protocol could be established that allows you to look back in history, if you will, to determine compliance.
So let me rephrase that, then. We're talking about changing behaviors. We're not talking about instant consequences, so to speak.
Yes, I I suppose that's one way to put it. And I and I would defer to town council as to what kind of conditions could be crafted so that there are teeth, I guess you'd call it, to enforceability of any violation of those conditions, right? So, for instance, to the extent, you know, South Street impacts are not immediately caught, if you will, instantaneously identified, if through a a look back there's a distinct connection between the property and its traffic activity and the increases in commercial activity along South Street as an example, there could be provisions, I would imagine, that would allow for a reach back or a a fine of sorts to be established for that. But that's.
Talking about fines, you have a wayfinding signage plan for the site, and there's reference to a one-hundred-and-fifty-dollar engine brake operation fine within the park. Is that a legally enforceable fine? Is there state law that would allow that to be upheld if it was challenged?
So this is Chip Nylan again on behalf of the of the applicant. You know, we we don't control what takes place on the state highway, obviously. That's, we can't, but but Frank has indicated, and he can speak to this, that there's first an institutional check here, because when he tells his tenant tenant that they can't have more than thirteen-hundred-and-ten average daily trips, then that that tenant knows that 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 there's a limitation that's there. So that's number one. Number two, we looked at whether or not we could physically block the turn to the east. And I think that's not possible. We haven't found a way to do that without endangering public safety vehicles coming into the into the facility. But we are willing, and and Frank has indicated, that we'll put that in the lease, the requirement that there cannot be any turns to the east. And that would be a that'd be a contractual relationship between us and the and the tenant to the extent, and that would be a breach of lease, which would, you know, which could be remunerated. So there could be a penalty there, and I would expect and/or an indemnity in the event that the town took actions against us for exceeding. I I finally do want to say that enforcement, we've, you know, we've been listening to two-hundred residents and and butters for weeks. And we know that enforcement is the linchpin for this project going forward. And we're committed to doing what we can, either with the town or on our on Hoppingbrook Road and working with town council to come up with that. And and I think that's why the 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 monitoring is so critical, because that gives you the evidence. And I I don't think it's a change of behavior. I think it can be instantaneous, because to the extent that we see that those violations occur, then we can take action against those, you know, quickly.
Okay, thank you. Well, and you mentioned.
Let me just add to that, Tina, the, from a fine perspective, there is state-level stuff. But if we have a prohibition in the zoning documentation, the zoning permits, then those are enforceable either in equity through injunctions or through a fine, which the the zoning enforcement officer is allowed to impose on a per-incident basis, depending upon the evidence. And that evidence could come from the monitoring program or other evidence that's collected. So it is possible to administer fines to that, to the zoning apparatus here.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification, both Attorney Nylan and Talon. Thank you. I'm just going to change gears, no pun intended here, to water. So it it looks like there was a propose, there was a septic system that was permitted back in February of twenty-twenty. And the permit is seventy-five-hundred gallons per day for the septic system for five, up to five-hundred employees. I'm just going to point out, you know, that if used to that extent, would put it this site as one would expect among the top users of Holliston's water supply. But coming back to that that permit that was approved, what's interesting to me is that in July, so several months after the permit was approved, MIPA determined in July of twenty-twenty that no septic system can be approved at that time. So can you clarify the status of the permit for the septic system in light of that MIPA determination?
So again, Chip Nylan, can I can I address that?
Yeah, go right ahead, Chip.
So actually, this is why I was introduced to the project. I came in when we were filing with MIPA back approximately a year ago. It turns out that the town had approved these individual lots for septic systems, and that had gone through DEP without anybody recognizing that there's a a statute and a regulatory requirement that if you're generating more than ten-thousand gallons per day, that you have to get out of the septic system regulated by the town and you're regulated by the Commonwealth. So as part of the agreement with the MIPA office back in July, when this came to our attention, that they'd had these individual Title V systems approved, we agreed to go through the groundwater discharge permit process, which we are doing with with Mass DEP. So there could be one of two endpoints. Either A, we'll have septic systems because we can show that there won't be a discharge of nitrogen and phosphorus at the boundary lines that exceed the DEP requirements, or we would have a private wastewater treatment plant that would handle those on the lot. So we've we've committed that that will take place before any occupancy. So it I I can't say that that septic system may not ultimately be operated because there is a process within DEP that it can be, but that's yet to be decided.
Attorney Nylan, do I remember correctly that that was MIPA's originally original determination, it could go back to two thousand and three, that it would have a wastewater facility?
I think that that when when they were talking about three million square feet, I think that that's what was intended. But since, you know, the market changed and the and the individual filings were made that the wastewater treatment plant wasn't wasn't constructed, they went with a private Title V.
So wastewater management, at this point, is still an open question?
Well, not that, it's it's clearly under the jurisdiction of DEP. So the only thing that's open is whether it will be a septic system that meets DEP requirements or a wastewater treatment plant that meets DEP requirements. But either way, that can't take play, occupancy of the building can't take place without that being resolved.
Thank you. And then last question, has the fire flow plan for the facility been presented to the town of Holliston for review?
Yeah, I don't I don't know the answer to that.
It's Peter Bemis. So we we designed our water distribution system to include a loop, which would improve both the water quality and quantity within the municipal system. We would anticipate that we would likely have a pump to bring the pressures up for fire suppression within the building. But there appears to be enough volume here to satisfy the needs of this building. So nothing extraordinary, just the water supply that's there and and then there'd be a pump to supplement the pressures within the building.
Thank you. All right, and I'm going to pivot to that net zero goals as my colleague asked a couple of questions earlier. And we know that in the last week, the climate bill was signed into law by Governor Baker. So there's a lot of interest right now, but in Holliston always, in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. You mentioned EV charging stations. You mentioned dark-skY lighting. I'm not sure to what extent those are already in the stretch code, which I think is going to get updated. But are you prepared, then, to build a LEED-certified building? Is that a commitment you're making to the town of Holliston?
Well, we we submitted for a building permit, and it's yet to be reviewed. So, you know, basically, we have to get through this particular step before we start talking about the design of the building. So, you know, what I'll say is, whatever conditions are imposed by the town of Holliston, we would certainly look to do. Now, as far as LEED-certified, we can we can debate that all day long. I would tell you that, me, I'm not a proponent of the LEED trademark for all different reasons that you probably know already, meaning when you spend a dollar, most of that goes into the administration and actually getting your LEED certification and not into hard products that actually save the environment. So what I would tell you is, we would do, you know, you know, whatever we could, whatever we could on that particular aspect to make this a building that people enjoy and love.
Frank, a quick follow-up question to Tina's question there. I I sense that you're you're deflecting there because you haven't got a tenant yet and the 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 building's precise needs haven't been determined. But you did speak earlier about the expansive experience your company has building these facilities across the country. Have you built anything to LEED style standards?
Yes, yes, and that's how that's how we know the process. So I myself have built as high as LEED gold, did one for Porsche. We do LEED-certified on a regular basis.
So you're, there's a capability for it. It'll just be determined downstream after the permit is provided.
Yeah, and what I'll also tell you, there's also a moniker that a lot of people in my business put on buildings to say that they are LEED-capable or LEED-ready, something to that nature, where a lot of the pre-work is done. And when the tenant comes in, basically say, okay, let's use all the points that you get based on your particular operation, i.e., hey, let's put, let's put a trash compactor over here. Let's do this. Let's let's put the toilets in the other part of the building, whatever whatever those things may be, to basically maximize the points that you would get through that system.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. And then two more questions and then, well, all right, three more questions. And thank you for being patient with me while I run through them all. You mentioned that there'll be no fueling on-site. But is there a fueling plan for the fleet of trucks? Is that something CRG develops or is that something that the tenant develops? So the plan for those trucks, I mean, you're you're giving them a designated route. What is, how is the fueling plan established? Or is that not something that CRG does?
It's not something we do, that's up to the tenant. But what I'll tell you is, we very rarely store any motorized vehicles on the site longer than, I don't know, eight hours, ten hours, and that's just going to be guessing. We do have trailer spots on the site for obvious reasons. A lot of the the guys, you know, drop the trailer, pick up another one, and they go. So there's no need to fuel on-site, and that's usually left left up to the tenant.
Thank you. All right, switching now to to transportation, public transportation, that is. What direct communication has CRG had with the MWRTA to expand public transit into the Hoppingbrook Park? Again, I believe in two thousand and three, and then again in July of last year, MIPA directed the project proponent to explore expanding public transit into Hoppingbrook Park. And I believe mention was made by CRG or perhaps it was Peter Bemis, but back in February, that you would have conversations about expanding public transit into Hoppingbrook Park. So I'm just wondering if you can provide an update on any direct communication with the MWRTA?
That's a question for Peter, but I I do believe we're obligated to do so, correct?
We 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 included that in the decision. Bob, Michio had brought it to our attention about the bus route, which does not include Hoppingbrook. I believe it just comes to the center of town. We're very much interested. Frankly, if if I could get the three selectmen that are appearing here tonight to support this project, I'll be the first one to run down and start initiating that effort. So.
I believe the MWRTA has already, I'm sorry, I believe the MWRTA has already reached out to you to express an interest.
No, no, ma'am. We we were told that we should initiate that, but but we don't have a project yet. So I can't really start much solicitation of them to bring the the route to the park. But as soon as we have support for it, we will. I can promise you that.
Okay, last question, and this is just a personal one, if you wouldn't mind indulging me. You stated that it's up to five-hundred employees to operate the the eight-hundred-thousand-square-foot facility twenty-four-seven. How do you operate an eight-hundred-thousand-square-foot facility with about one-hundred-and-seventy-five employees per shift? How does that work? I just can't envision that few number of employees on a site as large as eight-hundred-thousand-square-feet. Someone had referenced random outlets as about the same size. And I I think they're, it's just an odd odd thing to try to envision.
Well, okay, so it's it's very normal. A lot of people are boggled, you know, I've got a million-square-foot building with a hundred employees. And it depends on how the how the the product in the particular building is is contained, right? So a lot of these buildings that are larger in nature have pelletized cargo, right? So if you have a pelletized cargo, you have a driver on a forklift moving that particular pallet to a location within the building and then usually going into another truck. But the heavy employee counts that you see are what we call pick-and-pack or fulfillment type of operations, where you see people going to a particular bin and picking out one specific item for shipping, such as, I don't know, a pair of socks. So you can imagine how labor-intensive those type of buildings are. So that would be, this isn't the proposed use for this particular building. So mechanization, as far as conveyor belts and stuff like that, no. This is this is kind of more basic pelletized cargo type of.
Thank you. Again, thank you for indulging my questions, and to those who are waiting to ask there, thank you.
All right, thanks, Tina. All right, I will move to my question. I'll try to direct my questions to the speaker that addressed the topic during your presentation. The first question, I think, goes to Frank. During the opening presentation, you all talked about a pivot point when the project kind of changed, and you gave some concessions to the size of the project. What was the date of that pivot, do you recall?
No, it, I.
While you're thinking, Frank, while you're thinking, Frank, let me give you the follow-up question, which is the, what caused you to pivot? What caused you to reconsider the size of the project and change some of the scope?
It wasn't, so the size of the project never changed, right? So it's always been eight-hundred-thousand-square-feet. That hasn't changed. What caused us to include more? What caused us to include more, I call them impact mitigation features for the site, was just all the feedback that we were hearing, right? So, so we basically thought, okay, in order to keep this project moving, let's offer more, let's offer more than we've offered so far, let's do burns, let's, let's reduce truck traffic, or, I'm sorry, trailer spaces, let's sort of do a bunch of site things that might get this over the hump.
Okay.
The size has never changed, I, I've seen that in newspaper articles, but that's, that's wrong, it's always been the same size.
Well, thanks for clarifying. Scott Thornton, most of my questions are coming your way. Let me start with the first one. In one of the screens you put up, you talked about traffic counts and the traffic counts that are approved of the industrial park, the traffic counts that would be projected under the design of this project. Does, does the, does your, does your analysis make a distinction between a car and a truck? Is all traffic considered the same? Can you offer me some insight as to how you, how you distinguish a truck versus a car in your traffic count?
Yeah, so, so in terms of those overall percentage increases and, and daily trips, they're in terms of vehicles, so it's cars and trucks. In terms of separating or accounting for the effects of trucks, we have vehicle equivalency factors in, in the analysis, which accounts for, you know, based on a certain percentage of trucks in the, or heavy vehicles in the traffic stream, it accounts for tho, for a slower vehicle or, or larger vehicle movement in the analysis.
With respect to the signal at Hoppingbrook and Route 16, have you folks evaluated the site specifically what impact the cemetery may have on the development of that intersection?
Yes.
What, what's going to happen?
We're, we're not affecting anything on that side of the, we're, we're not coming, we're not, we're not widening significantly in that area, so we're not affecting anything with the cemetery.
So the signal will probably come from your side or the bus side of Hoppingbrook and Crane over 16, is that the idea?
Yeah, I mean, it, that hasn't been determined yet, but it'll be within the right-of-way that's out there.
Okay. So again, Scott, this, this question's to you, but I think I heard one of your colleagues address it earlier, but as, as traffic would be leaving Hoppingbrook, your analysis showed some distinction between that, those heading westward and those heading eastbound. Personally, I'm most concerned about this traffic heading eastbound, specifically into Holliston Center, which is, you know, an historical congested environment. What, maybe it was Chip or somebody mentioned earlier, you've done some work to try to figure out a way to keep that traffic from coming into Holliston Center. Can you describe what those efforts have been and, and, and what, what further can be done to restrict that heavy commercial vehicle traffic and, and bring them effectively onto Summer Street?
Yeah, and, and I think that, that Bob Michio gave a, a pretty, a pretty substantial discussion on the, on the topic of traffic monitoring and, and Chip Nylund also touched on that, but, you know, the, the traffic monitoring is designed to capture and, and record the vehicles, the vehicle movements coming from the CRG site and to, to identify and, and ensure that trucks are making the, the movement to the west and coming to the site from the west. In terms of the, the vehicle, the overall traffic distribution, you know, we're, we're basically assuming that with the exception of the trucks, which are again, 100% directed to and from the west, we would expect that the, that the vehicle traffic, the car traffic, would follow the existing traffic patterns intersection. So, so by continuing to, to monitor those movements, tracking the vehicles as they exit the site, the goal is to, is to ensure compliance and making sure that the trucks keep to the, to the west and to their intended routes.
Earlier when you talked about your traffic analysis, I, I think I saw this in a prior presentation, perhaps when Mr. Milonowski was with us, but I'm looking to see if you've, if you've updated the traffic movement throughout the day. Early on, Peter described this, or, I'm sorry, maybe Frank did, that this is a 24/7 operation. Can, can residents in Holliston, if this project goes forward, get a better understanding of where those, when those 1310 vehicles are going to be moving through our street?
So we haven't, we haven't done that analysis, looking at, at sort of the 24-hour spectrum for the, for the, for the operations. We're typically focused on the peak hour considerations because those are, those are when traffic generated by the site and traffic on the adjacent streets is, is typically highest. You know, and it, and I think in, you know, to some extent, it depends on the, on the actual tenant that goes into the site as to, as to how their, their traffic is, is distributed throughout that 24-hour day. In general, there's, there's more traffic, more, more warehouse traffic throughout the course of the day, and it, you know, it, it does tend to, it does, does drop off, there's still some volume of traffic, some, some percentage, or, you know, I, I don't, offhand, I don't have the exact numbers, but, but there is some, some low percentage that occurs after hours, after, after the PM peak, for sure, but I think it, the actual numbers would depend on, on the tenant that goes into the site.
I could tell you from my perspective, Scott, that would be very helpful information to have, because if there's any way the developer slash tenant can spread that trip or that traffic count out over a reasonable period, maybe after hours and so forth, that's a quality of life issue, I think you're going to have that loud and clear, so I'll leave that with you to figure out if you can share anything with, with us on that. Frank, question for you, you, you mentioned early on the wide experience that CRG has across the country building these facilities. Does this facility have any future use of drone activity that we should be thinking of with respect to future use?
I don't think in any of our lifetimes, I mean, I get questions about autonomous vehicles and drone activity, but no.
Not, not in play right now, right?
No, certainly not, and I, you know, if you want me to put something in the lease, I'd be happy to do so.
Last question, has anyone, I guess it's more towards you, Scott, has anyone examined the Route 16 length of roadway that is going to be in most common use and, and most heavily used to determine if the roadway is in proper condition now for that kind of truck traffic?
I would, I would imagine that's the, the type of analysis that would be done during the, the future study, the MEPA study. It is a, as you know, it's a, it is a principal arterial and, and should be able to accommodate volumes of, of truck traffic, but to date, we have not performed that analysis.
Going to give you a running start and I'll tell you it's not very, it's not ready for prime time, roadway's not been improved in quite some time, and it's in very tough shape, actually, the full length, but it is a serious issue for us going forward. At this point, I believe the Select Board, unless you have any follow-up questions, Mr. Starle?
I do not.
Fine.
I'm all set.
Has concluded its portion of the questions for this evening. Thank you very much, CRG, for listening to us. We're about to turn it over to the public, whom I think have a series of questions, some presentations. If you'll allow us, we'll take a five-minute comfort break and we'll rejoin you in just a few minutes, at which time we will turn it over to our residents for some Q and A. So we'll be right back, stay right where you are, thank you. Okay, folks, we're back, thank you for allowing us to have a brief minute there. We're going to get going with the citizens' portion of the discussion this evening. Want to remind everybody again to raise your hand, when you recognize, please announce your name and address before we get going. I just want our, excuse me, our town administrator, Travis Trehern, to give a quick pitch for our town website, which has contained a lot of the information associated with the project.
Travis? Thank you. The IT director's going to pull it up here, just want to show, so if you go on our website, the 555 Hoppingbrook, right at the bottom, if you scroll all the way to the bottom, you can click here to sign up for email notifications. So anytime this site is updated, you would get a notification, so we've been adding any new documentation related to, whether it be traffic permitting, excuse me, traffic review, peer review of those traffic studies, et cetera, all goes on the website, and then you can sign up for an update anytime that happens, anytime a planning meeting gets posted, the Select Board meeting gets posted, you'd be notified. So I just wanted to point that out as a feature of the website and encourage anybody to sign up if you're interested.
Thanks. Now, Peter, as the questions come in from the citizens, I'm going to ask you to traffic cop it where you want the question to go with respect to your team, is that fair enough?
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, yes.
All right, let's start with Mr. Gary Donlin, who I understand is part of a team and has a few people associated with his presentation and questions, so if we'd like, we'll start with Mr. Donlin.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me all right?
Loud and clear.
I had, I had submitted a presentation, there it is, wonderful. So I come to you tonight as a fellow citizen concerned about the traffic implications for this project. The Planning Board has done a wonderful job trying to assess the project, it's rather large and complex compared to other things we've looked at in town, but ultimately, when it comes to the issue of traffic, as I understand it, if there's a problem, that's going to be in the purview of the Select Board. And my assessment of this project, and I'll share with you the why behind this, is that if you could click the next slide, the project is going to generate four to seven times higher than what's been estimated as the traffic. And that's because the project looks more like the building on the right than it does the building on the left. If you could click the next slide. A little background in history, when this project was originally proposed to Holliston, the design company, engineering and design consultants stated that the project is a proposed 800,000 square foot high cube warehouse. So one might ask, what's a high cube warehouse? Can you go to the next slide? In 2016, which goes back a ways, but it's very, very relevant, so if you bear with me, the Institute of Transportation Engineers did a study, it's about 30 pages, looking at high cube warehouse vehicle trip generation analysis, because as you can imagine, these large e-commerce type warehouses were blossoming around the country. If you could go to the next slide, this is an extract from the report that the IT came out with, and it states, "A high cube warehouse is a building that typically has at least 200,000 gross square feet, a ceiling height of 24 feet or more. It is used for primarily consolidation, storage of goods and services, so forth and so on." And then it goes on to talk about the different types of high cube warehouses. The key numbers I'd ask the Select Board to look at, 200,000 square feet of a footprint, 24 feet in height. Down at the bottom, under findings, it does acknowledge that the high cube warehouse market continues to evolve, and although the tenant or its planned operations are often unknown at the time of site development review, for the purpose of establishing vehicle trip generation, it may be as important to know the tenant as other facility factors." I think it's fair to say, can you back up? Thank you, I'm sorry. It's fair to say that facility factors, if you don't know the tenant, would be one of the features and characteristics of the project. Next slide. In Q1 of 2020, when engineering and design consultants proposed the project, it was an 800,000 square foot, 52-foot height building predicated on a zoning board of appeals variance that was required, 170 loading docks, which is one per almost 5,000 square foot, and 24/7 365 operation, if you can go to the next slide. So the question becomes, is 555 Hoppingbrook a warehouse or a high cube warehouse? Well, according to the definition from the IT, a high cube warehouse is anything greater than 200,000 square feet at 24 feet in height. Push the down button, please, if you would, Chris. This high cube warehouse that's been proposed is 800,000 square foot of footprint, so the footprint on the ground is four times that of what a high cube warehouse is defined as. Push the down arrow, please. But when you go vertical, as they've requested to do with their variants, you're really stacking another entire warehouse on top of the first one. That's where the notion of a high cube warehouse comes in. So the question is, is 555 a high cube warehouse? So the question is, is 555 a high cube warehouse? Well, if you look at the cubic feet, it's greater than eight times the threshold of what a high cube warehouse is considered as. Now, why this becomes important, if you can go to the next slide. High cube warehouses were addressed in the transportation manual as far back as 2008 in the eighth edition. You can see there in the middle, 152 high cube warehouse, and they had their multipliers. And what you do is you take, okay, it's 800,000 square feet. You multiply 800 times 1.44 or 1.68. But in the 10th edition, they came out with more specific information on four different types of high cube warehouses. They did away with the general code of 152 and tailored the new guidance in 2017. High cube warehouse, transload, fulfillment, parcel hub, or cold storage. Next slide, please. So, to their credit, when Engineering Design Consultants proposed the project, the development entails 800,000 square feet. They referenced the IT manual in 2017, the 10th edition, which is what I just showed you. And it goes on to say, "The modern warehouses include significant automation as well, as may become a central point for the last part of delivery." Of the different types of warehouses, it was determined 155 fulfillment center and 156 high cube parcel hub are most reasonable to consider for analysis. However, due to a limited amount of data being available and substantial variation in the data, they wanted to use two alternative data sets. And this was referred to as an alternative methodology. Next slide, please. The alternative methodology was to take the Florida Department of Transportation study and a Rajapun published work in their journal, the IT Journal. And this was done because in the IT 10th Edition Journal, ostensibly there was limited data, right? There's limited data. Let's go and look at another data set. And they came up with 1,488 average daily trips. I want to let you know, if you take your notes, had they used the IT 10th Edition manual, whether it was a 155 high cube warehouse or a 156, that average daily trip number would have been greater than 6,000. Four times higher than this 1,488. So even back then, had the inexistence manual been applied and not this alternative methodology, it would have generated four times the estimate of trips. Next slide, please. Here's the rub, though. That was January 20th. January, I'm sorry, February 3rd, only days later, the supplement to the 10th Edition manual came out. And note what I have in yellow. It says, "The supplement adds substantially expands data for two land use codes, high cube fulfillment center 155 and high cube 156." So you would think, oh, jeez, that's fantastic, because now we've got richer data. They're calling it out to their professional IT engineer members. Let's see what the data looks like. Next slide, please. And what you can see in the far right column, a couple of things happened. One, the high cube fulfillment center warehouse 155 multiplier is there, 6.44. The parcel hub warehouse multiplier is 4.66, both, by the way, a little lower than them, but they had been. But those numbers take care of the original supposed shortcoming of the IT 10th Edition, which was, well, we don't have very comprehensive data sets, so we're gonna use Florida Department of Transportation data. Note also, by the way, in the supplement last February, warehouse 150, the multiplier was dropped to 1.58. Three key things happened, and I'm gonna fly through the next slides real quick. Next slide, please. One, MDM did a peer review of the study. If you look at the bottom, to their credit, they said, "MDM recommends that the applicant update trip estimates and associated capacity and signal warrant analysis to reflect the IT trip generation supplement, the one that just came out last February, based on land use 156." Next slide, please. Number two, the Holliston Planning Board, and this is the only time I'll mention them tonight, certificate of action says, in item 21, "Trip estimates and associated capacity and signal warrant analysis shall be updated to reflect the supplement based on land use code 156." So they took the peer reviews recommendation. By the way, that requirement has never been done, has never been fulfilled. Next slide, please. And perhaps most importantly, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts sent a letter to the landowner's attorney. By the way, this is an industrial park. People get to develop industrial parks, I get that. But there are some constraints. In this case, Massachusetts said, "Your letter estimating 1,488 average daily trips, however, comments from Mass DOT indicate disagreement with your methodology and suggest the estimate could be as high as 7,500 average daily trips." Second, the 800,000 square foot building that, according to Mass DOT, appears to function more like a fulfillment center or high cube parcel hub than a conventional distribution center or warehouse. So the act one of this whole thing was, it's a high cube warehouse, but we don't like the manual, so we're gonna do a Florida Department of Transportation assessment, and we're gonna submit the numbers. Days later, the supplement comes out. We have all the data we need now to do the assessment. Let's see what happens. But before we get to that, next slide, please. Just to give more concrete evidence that this is a high cube warehouse, Engineering Design Consultants in June asked for a variance of the height so they could provide a 40-foot clear height interior. I've done a lot of research, and I've come to learn that's a key term. You gotta build about a 52-foot-high building to have a 40-foot clear height interior in order to move goods through the building in a very fast period of time. Next slide, please. And our zoning board of appeals, next slide, the other direction, there you go. Gave a grant of relief of 12-foot so that they could get a large-scale distribution warehouse facility. Next slide. Then the summertime comes, and you would think that the Planning Board was the one that had done this massive delay. In fact, what happened is, there were two, possibly three, but I couldn't find the answer to that, continuance required, requested, rather, by Engineering Design Consultants and the applicant. And then we get to the beautiful fall in Holliston, and this thing rears its head for what I'll call act two. Next slide, please. And this is what act two looked like, and this should be a little quicker. November 18th, Vanessa Scott Thornton, who I believe is here tonight, wrote a letter to Lionel Lucian, Public Private Development Unit, State of Massachusetts. And there was new commentary on project-generated traffic. Let's look at the next slide. And Vanessa writes, "The project will entail the construction of an 800,000 square foot building. In order to develop the characteristics of the project, trip generation statistics published by IT for similar land uses as that proposed were used. IT land use code 150 warehousing was used to develop the traffic characteristics of the project." Very little explanation as to how that came about until you look at the next paragraph. "This is based on information provided by the client, that is to say, the applicant, that potential tenants for the site are proposing a building consistent with a standard warehouse and not other warehouse types." So now we've got the variance for a 52-foot high cube warehouse. And a matter of months later, in November, we're saying, well, we really wanna just put a regular warehouse up because that's what the demand is for. Well, then, let's look at the specs of the project at that point in time. Next slide, please. Interesting. Get a drink of water. Like Mr. Pacuna said, it was still 800,000 square feet by 52 feet height, because now it's the zoning board of approval. Clarified it. They did drop a few truck-loading docks. But interestingly, the threshold of one loading dock per 5,000 square feet is a threshold that IT recognizes for a high cube warehouse. Trailer spaces and parking spaces, they swapped some asphalt. The project is still 24/7, 365 days a year. And oh, by the way, in the notes from the November 12th Planning Board meeting, quote, "Mr. Bemis from Engineering Design Consultants noted use of IT code 150 warehouse in the traffic study as directed by the client." Interesting. I'm just quoting what I saw in the minutes. Why does this matter? Go to the next slide, please. So this is, remember, the original estimate was 1,488 trips. Well, we don't really like the IT manual, had not enough data, now it comes out. What are we estimating now? We're dropping the estimated aided trips to 1,310. Trucks are a percent of those, 362 per day, and total PM peak trips down the bottom of 152. Next slide, please. "The relevance of the land use code and what this project is or isn't is critical." Land use code 155, a high cube fulfillment center warehouse, will generate 5,152 average daily trips, not 1,310. It's eight times above the threshold of what counts for a high cube warehouse. That makes sense. They generate a lot of traffic. By the way, while we're on the 1,310, 500 in and out is 1,000 trips right there. So how do you get a few hundred on top of that? This is four times the daily traffic, which has been estimated. By the way, 5152 is just attributable to this project, not the whole park. That's a 270% volume increase over what the park is living with today. And even if you took, as Mr. Thornton tried to take a few weeks ago in a planning board meeting, well, let's look at the park as it is today, plus what's been approved or is being built. It's a 250% increase in average daily trips over that. Next slide, please. Second issue. If you assume 27% of the trucks, excuse me, the traffic are trucks, it's not 362 trucks a day, it's 1,422 trucks a day. And by the way, that's a truck a minute over the course of 24/7. Most importantly, and where I think the whole project runs into a problem, next slide, please, is when you look at, I apologize, something bled through there. You look at the PM peak hour. All you do is take warehousing 150, multiply the factor of .19 times 800,000 square feet, 800,000 square feet, 152, that was the number they came up with. But if it's a high cube fulfillment center warehouse, which not only is it, but it likely could be used for the day after it opens, and you use the multiplier, it's 1,096 PM peak hour trips. I started off by saying it's four to seven times the amount of traffic. Next slide, please. Daily trips, daily truck trips, four times what's been estimated. PM peak hour, seven times what's been estimated. I believe that PM peak hour estimate is the linchpin in this whole project. Because there's no way you can get that extra volume of cars, and there I say trucks, left out of Hopping Brook Park and have the level of service at that intersection anything other than a failing grade. And that's gonna cause my fellow citizens who volunteer their time on the Select Board now and for 30 years to come, all kinds of headache phone calls. Real quick, next slide, please. In December, MDM, the peer review, does make a note about this and says at the bottom, "On the basis that the applicant expressly acknowledges alternate IT warehouse uses such as fulfillment center, partial hub, and transload are not anticipated." Not that there's a guarantee we were not gonna use in that way, not anticipated tenants. So the project should be assessed based on the most intensive standards for an unspecified tenant. Next slide, please. Mr. Pacunas writes a letter to our Planning Board. And he writes a sentence that says, "Based on our experience, the design of the building, and market demand for this type of facility, the type of tenancies noted above would generate vehicular traffic, I'm sorry, traffic of approximately 1,300 average daily trips, which IT categorizes as land use 150 warehouse." The problem with that sentence, besides being somewhat run on, the process for identifying traffic is to define the building and the land use, and from there, what the traffic trips are. This says, "We've come up with a number of 1,300, and that fits land use code 150." Lastly, if you go to the next slide, please. MDM follows up with yet another message, February 4th, and basically says, "We buy site plans for the project, reduce parking site programming, employment levels. The applicant has since provided additional information in the letter I just showed you." That cites projected employment levels, traffic changes, so forth and so on. Nowhere in here does it say anything about, "We agree with the assessment that this is a land use code 150." Next slide, please. I'm wrapping up here. So if I go back to the document that the IT originally put together to look at high cube warehouses, they talked about assessing a whole host of features and characteristics. You can see the list here. Two things I want to point out. The hallmark of a high cube warehouse is the building dimensions, length versus depth, ceiling height, and number of docks. As regards to automation, this question was asked by one of the Select Board members earlier tonight. The original write-up from January 20th last year said the project would have significant technology systems. The present write-up in November said it was not anticipated to be constructed with project. They would say they won't construct technology systems a week later. Next slide, please. The other thing that it talks about in that manual is additional descriptive features. I call your attention to truck sizes. Next slide, please. We've never been told, and to Ms. Heinz's question from the Select Board, we've never been told, what kind of trucks should we expect in Holliston? This is a schematic that classifies the Federal Highway Administration vehicles, class 1 through 13. Interestingly, class 8 through 13 are all considered tractor trailers. Our neighbors to the south in Rhode Island are actually towing these vehicles, different and separately from passenger vehicles. And when asked why, it was because the rationale behind that towing program was to tow the vehicles that caused the damage that needed to be repaired. So from this, next slide, please. These are the questions that I'm hoping we can avoid a lot of repetitive questions tonight by putting on the table. And that is, "Will any town board require a comprehensive traffic impact analysis begun on the Hopping Brook project using the originally identified land use code of 155 high cube fulfillment center warehouse? If such a study is done, and the average daily trips, AM and peak hour trips, and truck volumes are considered, what impact does this have on the level of service on Washington Street and Hopping Brook Road, even if there's a light installed?" Third, "The current traffic study estimates 30% of trips leave the park and head eastbound. Since the IT suggests a dress assessing traffic dispersion, where are they then headed? Where are they going? Downtown Holliston? South on Summer Street to go by Medway High School? Who knows? Will CRG be required to inform the Select Board what class of trucks we should expect in town? And will a bond be required to repair Holliston's infrastructure damage from high volume tractor trailer traffic?" Secondly, "Since CRG has been unable to cite a similarly situated project, does Holliston wanna be the beta test for a high cube fulfillment center warehouse in a small town, abutting a neighborhood, off a local two-lane road?" And last, I've learned some English language from town council recently, the word should or must. Since this is a legacy project for Holliston, if there's no current tenant, should or must our town boards consider and review the project based on the most intense possible use of the building, based on its features and specifications in order to estimate its potential impacts? Thank you for listening. I'm very concerned that if we don't get a handle on the land use for this building, have it assessed appropriately, we will cause a traffic problem, which unfortunately will be at the feet of you fine people who are volunteering your time as Select Board members. Thank you.
Good. Bless you. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that. Peter, we'd be curious to know if you folks have a response to what you just saw. We understand there's a lot of density to what Mr. Donlin presents. So if CRG has a reaction or a response, that'd be great. On the other hand, if you wanna retreat and provide something else in writing back through to us, that would be fine, too. But we wanna give you the opportunity to be heard. What's your choice?
Well, I'll just open with, no retreat.
Well, I'll just open with, no retreat, that's for sure, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's great. Peter, before we go, Peter, before we, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Frank, we're right ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, before we go down into a technical rabbit hole, because if everybody else is on the call, it's kind of like me. My eyes glaze over after a couple of minutes of listening to very smart people talk. And it's all accurate, I assume, but I don't understand half of it. So obviously, my expertise is neither in traffic nor apparently grammar. But what I would say is, from a layperson's point of view, I mean, when I generate ideas for projects like this, obviously you've already heard me say this. You know, I query my clients, I query random people that I think may want to lease my building someday. And I ask them about operations in particular locales. You've already heard me say that I've had a number of my particular clients approach me and say, hey, if you can find something near the arterials or near the interstates in the Boston area, we would take it. So what I did start asking them from day one on this project was to say, okay, what are your projects backed? So like, tell me your floor slab, tell me your clear height, tell me, tell me what you'd like to do in this particular area. Because an eight hundred thousand square foot building in one location operates significantly different than something, let's say, in Reno, Nevada. So that being said, my data collection, the specifics that I want to build to are about thirteen hundred trips a day or whatever, somewhere in that category. Because when I ask my people or the tenants that I've done business with before, how many truck trips, how many car trips would you run out of a particular facility in this area? How many people would you employ? It all fits within the parameters that we painted. So, you know, obviously the technical guys come up with numbers. And when someone puts five thousand trips a day, eight thousand, whatever it may be, my head about explodes, and I think to myself, there's no way we would ever produce anything of that magnitude. So I guess it's a fundamental difference of saying, okay, do we find, do we define the use of the building by characteristics or by operations? I always lean to the operations and say, okay, that always holds more water because those are the guys who are going to be actually leasing the building from me. So what I say about all the technical jargon, to say, okay, we can continue to talk about this to make everybody satisfied with methodologies and histories and things of that nature. But what I'm saying is, if you don't believe anything we've done thus far, help us impose a restriction on this particular site. That solves everything. Thirteen hundred trips a day maximum, come heck or high water, penalties, compliance, you know, compliance obligations. And I think you've already heard that, yes, imposed conditions are legally enforceable. And I'll also add that, you know, my tenants, we believe, and if I put specifically in the lease, you buy no way in heck are going to exceed this amount of trips a day. They will sign it, they will acknowledge it, and they will live by it. So I'll kind of hand it back to you, Peter, for the, if we want to give one now.
No, all I would say is that a year, what, almost fifteen months ago, you know, we did do the traffic analysis, which included the actual field counts to the site, which is what has been relied upon to generate the data and the studies. I did open by saying, you know, we're not traffic engineers. The town had asked for an analysis for this project as part of the cycling review process. And we put together the report and we vetted the traffic numbers with CRG. Fourteen hundred and eighty-eight was what we projected. Land use codes don't mean a thing to me. What I do state for the record, and it is accurate, was that we anticipated about fourteen hundred trips per day. And with an expert, VAI, being brought on board, they concluded thirteen-ten. And during the summer, when Mr. Donlin says we were relaxing by the aqueduct there, we were doing our work with MassDOT, and we did analyze these numbers. And the conclusions were that it is more appropriate that we are warehouse code one fifty for the code presentation, and thirteen-ten would be our max cap traffic. So that, in a nutshell, is what we have for traffic numbers, and we've capped it at thirteen-ten. And we've maintained that throughout this process. And Frank is willing to commit to it in the permit decision. And then now threefold, put a monitoring device at our site driveway, put a monitoring device at the signal that is needed at Route sixteen, and to put one at South Street should the town not prevail in putting a weight restriction on that street. I didn't see a lot of other questions in Mr. Donlin's presentation other than math manipulations. And all I can say for the record is that there is a math manipulation in that we cap our vehicle trip per day at thirteen-ten. Thank you.
Any other members of your team, Peter, i.e. Scott, or others that want to respond?
But, did you want to add?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chair. So, you know, there's, obviously, Mr. Donlin has done some homework, and there's a lot of information in his, in his presentation that, you know, particularly the final slide with the questions, we would, we would like to take some, some time to respond to and read those through. I will say that, you know, in general, the, the worst case scenario, you know, the fulfillment center land, and again, I'm sensitive that, that people, other people want to speak, and I don't want this, you know, this one set of comments to monopolize time any longer than it has to. But, you know, fulfillment center land uses are typically located, they're typically freight-related uses and, and facilities. And they're typically located near airports or postal service facilities due to the time sensitivity of the freight. And, and we don't have that. In terms of, of the, you know, the development, most, most permitting efforts, I understand it would be great to have, to have, to know who's going into every site before it gets, before it gets approved, who the tenant is. I would say that most of the projects that I work on, we don't know who the tenant is. We have, we have approximate idea of who the tenant is, whether it's, whether it's a retail facility or an industrial facility or a commercial facility or a warehouse facility. We don't, we simply don't have the, we don't have the information on who the exact tenant is. But, you know, committing to the monitoring, which, you know, even if, even if the town said, no, we don't need the monitoring, the state would not say that. So, so, so CRG is, is going to be tied to, to the, to some type of traffic monitoring. And they're stipulating that the traffic is for their site is going to be capped at thirteen hundred and ten, ten vehicles. So...
Scott, if I could interrupt you for a moment, in the interest of time, again, just a press question. One of the items that stood out in the presentation was some unfinished business with the planning board to deliver a traffic analysis relative to, I believe it was LUC one fifty-six. Do you still plan on providing that information to the planning board in your application?
So, we, we have provided information actually on land use code one fifty-five, which, which is, which is a higher generator than one fifty-six. And it's not, it's not a formal analysis, but it, but it does exist. And we have, we have provided that. We provided it to, I'm not sure if it's gone to the board, but it has gone to the town's consultant and to Mr. Talerman. So that, that is...
Appreciate your response, Scott. Peter, if we could, just to move on from this point of the presentation, I believe at the end of his presentation, Mr. Donlin asked a series of questions at the back of his presentation. Could you just take a stab at responding to those in writing and give, to the best of your ability, your group's general feedback, feedback on those questions? Could you have a stab at that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we'll do that.
Appreciate it. I think we have several other folks that wanted to speak. Next, I believe it would be, let's see. Let's go with Rami Mitri. Good evening, Rami.
Good evening, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, if you'd be so kind, give us your address, please.
Yes, I live on Winthrop Street on, in Holliston.
Okay, go ahead with your question or your point of view, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. So my, my point of view is, you know, I know CRG, the presentation that Gary did, he called it jargon, but it's not jargon and it's not manipulated data like the engineering design firm said. I take offense to that, number one. Secondly, as residents, we've been asking questions. I've asked, and I know this is not noise or anything like this, but the shifty answers that we've been getting from CRG for almost three months is what makes the residents very upset here. We've been asking questions to supply us with data for three months now, since February, actually, beginning of February. I've put in request after request after request for them to send us the source of their data, whether it's on noise, pollution, et cetera, and not once have they complied. They just keep sending me back letters through, through the planning board and basically not putting anything substantial in it. And then when, when I bring up facts to them, their lawyer, a lawyer telling an engineer that we have a model is very laughable to me. Because a model is nothing but something that you input and you can manipulate yourself. I've asked on several occasion that CRG provide us with this data because the data has, does not make sense at all when it comes to noise and other means. The other thing is, I wanted to point out, from, from a traffic study, I don't know if, if CRG has ever traveled on South Street. I doubt they ever drove on South Street. Because if you did, where the swamp area is, you cannot put two eighteen-wheeler trucks going by on, on this side of, of the South Street. Also, South Street is used by a lot of cyclists and a lot of runners to access the bike path. And what we're doing right there is we're waiting for somebody to be killed, right, right on that spot. This is a very, very narrow road. And because CRG and, and, you know, all these people that you have representing this project have no idea what this town is about, have no idea how we live here, how we cycle, how we run, about noise, et cetera. They think they can just give us things and tell us, I have a model or I did a peer review. It is very shameful, in my opinion, that we request information from them on several occasions, and they've never done that as well. Are the special permit requests that they do a study on dust, fumes, noise, pollution, et cetera. I haven't seen one mention of a hundred and sixty possible trucks idling. And the fact that when we talk and, and put points like this, and they say things like jargon to us and manipulating, that, that is not the way to go about it. Okay? And then the other thing I wanted to say, I, I've asked Kavan Otoshi on several occasions to provide me with their data. They said to me that they did, their, their study was based on a similar facility in Holliston. I'm still waiting for that similar facility since February. It tells you that they don't have that. And like Gary said, they want Holliston to be the beta site for this. And, and that's the problem here, they're very shifty. They've never addressed, when we asked them, how do you monitor traffic? You know what they said last time? They said they're going to put somebody out there with a piece of paper writing the license plates. I mean...
If I could introduce, let me interrupt you for a moment. I appreciate your concerns tonight. There are, I would imagine there's a process for flowing or routing your questions and concerns.
We did, we did.
Okay, and I would, I would hope you're using your elected officials as the path for that communication.
We did as well, yeah, we did as well.
I don't want to speak with CRG, but if, if, if you're putting your questions through your elected officials, they're the ones that are accountable to you.
Right, and we did, and we did that.
And I'd ask you to kind of form your comments in a more productive way and a more efficient way, if you could, please, bring it to an enclosure.
Right, what, what, what we're requesting is when we request data from, from them is that we are provided with the data so can, we can do our own analysis of how that's going to impact our life. That's what I'm asking, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rami, I appreciate your, your feedback. Peter, any, any reaction to Mr. Mitri's feedback? Is there anything forthcoming to him or elsewhere, or otherwise?
Yeah, I, I, at every course, we have tried to address this. We've provided things through the peer review engineer as well so that he too could, could try to address Mr. Mitri. I, I, you know, we're not done trying, we will continue to try. I just don't think Mr. Mitri is ever satisfied with what we provide him with, so I'm sorry. I mean, to the extent that we can, we will.
Well, I would encourage you to, again, this is not a planning board meeting, there are the elected officials for the citizens to use on, on that side of the aisle. I would encourage both of you to find some common ground with the planning board to share that information without delay. Rami, is that satisfactory? Or you have anything else to follow up on at this point before we move on to the next speaker? You're on mute, my friend.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you this evening. I'm going to pivot to a speaker that had an overview to share, Ms. Teri Stifler. If Teri is available, I'd like, I'd like to recognize you. And I believe you mentioned you wanted to provide an overview as well. So your address, please, Teri?
Sure, thank you very much. My name is Teri Stifler, and I live on Front Street in Holliston. And I actually just wanted to mention that a few of the speakers tonight are part of the Citizens Action Group for Stop 555 Hoppinbrook, which I'm sure people have seen the signs around and heard, heard from us. I just want to clarify with people, with people listening, that one of our key roles and our key drives on that is to dig into some of the details of this project and bring those facts to the community and the planning board and the select board. And we really appreciate the time you guys have given us tonight to present a lot of this detail. It's really appreciated. We're very serious about this project. We've actually hired the law firm McGregor and Legere, PC, to provide professional advice to our team. One of the representatives is on the call tonight. We really want to thank the community for what they've done, contributing to our work. They've allowed us to be able to bring a lawyer on to help with some of this assessment of the details, since many of us work full-time. And I think those were the main things I just wanted to talk about. And I wanted to, again, thank the select board for giving us this opportunity. There hasn't been a lot of opportunity to allow the public to have this much time to discuss questions and issues that they, that they see. So I really appreciate that, thank you very much.
All right, Teri, thank you. We're going to move on to Ms. Ginny Roach. Ginny, are you with us? If you're with us, I'm guessing you're muted.
There it is, okay. Can you hear me now?
All right.
Okay, sorry.
Provide, provide your address, thank you.
Hi, I'm at one oh five Arch Street.
Thank you, go ahead, what's on your mind?
Okay, if you'll put up the presentation, please.
This is Paul, not it.
Okay, thank you. So I guess you can tell that my questions are related to water. I'm a civil engineer with thirty-six years of experience specializing in stormwater and small-scale wastewater management. So the next slide. I touched on the wastewater management. So Title V contains the design criteria for sizing your wastewater systems. And for warehouses, you have generally two choices. Fifteen gallons per person per day if you don't have a cafeteria, and twenty if you do have a cafeteria. Next slide. So we took a look at the, bless you, at the plant for the wastewater system to the, to the Board of Health. So with five hundred persons and that no cafeteria situation, you'd have a seventy-five-hundred gallon per day system. And if you had the cafeteria, it would be the ten thousand gallons per day, which, as we were discussing earlier, you can have a Title V, generally speaking, you can have a Title V septic system for that lower number, and it kicks you into the groundwater discharge permit. I've designed many of these systems and to obtain that, that nitrogen level that we were talking about, you generally need a package plant, but see how that goes. So, if, it appears that you are not proposing a cafeteria in this building. So I guess we get, we get back to traffic again. I think truck drivers on the road are not likely to make their lunch or dinner at home. So are you planning on four hundred to five hundred people going into town daily or in the area to buy their lunch, dinner? And will they use their trucks to get there? That's the question. We can go into the other parts and then answer questions at the end if you'd like.
That's your call, Ginny, if you, if you want to wait. We can have Mr. Bemis address them at the end, that's fine.
Okay. So stormwater is next. The, basically, you're, you're taking this wooded area that has fine sandy loam for the, based on soils mapping, and you're putting down a building bigger than eighteen acres, plus the parking lots in previous area. The, the planning board regulations... The the planning board regulations require that you need to meet the mass stormwater management standards. The only stormwater report on the website so far has been your construction period stormwater pollution prevention plan. So the questions are on the next slide. Do you have a stormwater management report that demonstrates that you're not exceeding the peak rates of runoff now with those basins you're proposing? And you're not going to increase runoff flooding during a hundred year event? Are you compensating for loss of groundwater recharge? Did you do borings and textural analysis and permeability tests in those basins to prove that you can infiltrate the stormwater and match that loss of groundwater recharge? So we all know groundwater recharge is very important in Holliston. We get our drinking water from the groundwater. So we want to see that. And then this is a land use, an industrial land use with a higher pollutant load. You need extra treatment to remove TSS, which understand using particle separators. Your sediment four base didn't look very hefty in your basins. So I'd like to just see your size and counts for that. The next slide. I highlighted on your plan, this is the only plan, one of the few plans I could find with any sense of where the wetlands are relative to your proposed development. So they're highlighted in yellow. Generally, you need to show your fifty foot, hundred foot no disturbance buffer zones. That's in accordance with the Wetlands Bylaw. We don't see any of that on your plans. So we'd like to see some some more evidence that you are not impacting wetlands. And I understand you're going to retrofit that basin. That basin's out there now on the lower right off the cul-de-sac. Be good to know what what that's going to involve. And you are on your plans, I'm backing up to the wastewater, you're showing that seventy five hundred gallon per day septic system, so we'll get back to that later. The next slide. The last slide is on, I think Tina also brought this up. What generally is going to drive your sizing of your system and have the most impact is the fire flow. So did you do a model that shows that you're going to maintain, you'll have the available flow for fires at the height as well, the adequate system pressures maintained? So that's what I had.
Is that it, Teri?
Ginny, yeah.
Oh, sorry, Ginny. Peter, Peter, there are some questions in here that have a technical bent to them. I don't know if you've got staff there here tonight that can address any or all of the concerns brought forth by Ginny. What's your reaction? Is this something you can give us feedback on?
I can I can address them. So today, as Chip had outlined, we we did design a Title V compliant soil absorption system for the site. The soil testing was witnessed by the Holliston Board of Health. And and we don't have a cafeteria, that's seventy five hundred gallons per day. I would expect to be able to prevail with that with with mass DEP because the nitrogen loading for the park is is well below what they had possibly anticipated when it was three million square feet originally proposed for this project. But as Chip said, they've reserved their review, so we will have to complete that at some point. Whether they'll allow the the design to go forward as is or or to do a treatment plant on site, so either or. But there will be no cafeteria here. The ten interests of the mass DEP for stormwater analysis have been completed. The report has been provided. I believe Karen posted everything, so it's of record. Certainly can be reviewed by by Ms. Roach. And no work is proposed within a hundred feet of any wetland resource area. They the resources are shown on the plan, the setbacks are shown on the plan. Conservation was also solicited for for opinions on these as well. So so that's all embedded over the record. And then on water supply, I did allude to this earlier. We are going to provide a loop that the town needs to improve both its water quality and water distribution as part of this project, which you do not have now. You have a dead end system. So that would be one significant attribute that this project brings forward for the town. We would need to increase the water pressure at our site, and we would do so with a pump. Would have no impact on the on the town, other than the benefit of having the looped water system that you don't have today.
Okay, so then there just remains the question about the reality of not having a cafeteria. Is that reasonable?
And and the question the question was, do these people go to town to eat? I mean, I I will tell you, you know, ninety nine percent of warehouse workers are tupperware, brown bag, bring your lunch type of people. As far as the truck drivers, their residency at this site is not long at all. Again, the reason why we have trailer storage spaces is because they typically come in, drop a trailer off, grab another one and go. So their residency time going down to the local restaurant and parking a truck, I I haven't seen before. So most, you know, a vast majority of these warehouse workers eat on site.
Peter, this is Chip Niall. Can I just add one thing on the wastewater? Mr. Chairman?
Please go ahead, Chip. Yep.
I think there's a suggestion with the presentation that we're seeking to avoid environmental review by not having a cafeteria. We I, as I indicated a while ago, and I know it's been a long evening, we're we're subject to DEP and a groundwater discharge permit with this project, whether it's a cafeteria or not. That 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 review will take place to determine whether or not we meet the requirements for nitrogen and phosphorus or we don't. And if we meet them, then we'll go one route. And if we don't meet them, then we have to build a treatment plant. But there's no circuitous action here to avoid any kind of review or to build anything. And in terms of things being shifty, Frank has told us to do everything that's necessary to comply with every rule and regulation to answer every question. When when Mr. Donlin said that that we looked at the traffic at the request of the of the client, it's because the client was tired of hearing about one fifty in fulfillment, and he authorized us to do the work. So, you know, we're we are, we remain committed to do everything that we're required to do and to and to work with and be here all night with you and with the planning board. We have, we've tried to answer every question.
Well, it did that you're choosing the lower standard, however, whether you're filling a groundwater discharge permit, then the question is, are you undersizing your system? Because you don't know who the tenant will be. How do you know they won't have a cafeteria? I would, as an engineer, I would choose the worst case and put in the cafeteria and that flow and design it properly.
So there there are certain uses that we as a landlord allow and don't allow. So obviously, if a tenant comes into our building with a lot of operating restrictions, my my clear message to them is, you're not going to do anything to breach those operating restrictions, whatever they may be. It could be any component of the building, a floor slab, for instance. If I build a three inch floor slab, I'm going to tell my tenant, don't bring anything heavy into this building because I don't want you to crack the floor slab. So, you know, this isn't, you know, tenants don't operate in the building without ramifications to A, the landlord, and B, and more importantly, every jurisdiction that has laws that they have to comply with.
All right, thank you. Ginny, are you all set with your questions?
I am. I look forward to seeing the reports. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. I wanted to, before we move on, there were presentations made tonight that you saw come up on the screen. Those are publicly available. If CRG wants any any part of that property, just get ahold of Travis. We'll get copies too.
Yeah, thank you.
We're gonna move, we're gonna move on to the next person who had their hand up. That would be Travis. Hein, good evening, Travis. How are you? Could you just give us your address?
Mr. Terry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead, sir.
Travis Hein, one forty two Union Street. This question is for Mr. Micho from MDM.
And I'll be quick. I think this is relatively new question. So this refers to similar speculative warehouses that have used IQ land use codes. Two quick examples. One is CRG Speculative Warehouse called the Cubes at Dupont in Washington that used code one fifty five, IQ fulfillment center. And it's got nearly identical specs to five 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 Hopping Brook. Another one is local. It's a speculative warehouse in Oxbridge, Massachusetts that used land use code one fifty six. And the traffic study that Oxbridge Warehouse was completed in July twenty twenty to five 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 Hopping Brook. It's land use code one fifty six with the four point six traffic rate. Five hundred thousand square feet, forty five foot height, similar car parking. And it's adjacent to a four lane highway. And that's completed by MDM. Peer review of that Oxbridge study affirmed the use of land use code one fifty six, and that peer review was completed by Van Ness. But my question is, if MDM and Van Ness decided that it was appropriate to use land use code one fifty six for speculative warehouse in Oxbridge, but not for a speculative warehouse in Holliston, how did you come to that conclusion?
Can I say something before you answer, because something just kind of hit off my memory here? So the the Cubes project, which Cubes project did you mention? Where was it?
Oxbridge.
We haven't done one in Oxbridge. What I'm talking about the the CRG project. You just mentioned the CRG project that used land use code one fifty six.
I think he's trying to unmute himself in Cannes. It was Dupont and something else. Does that ring any bells to you, Frank?
Okay, so yeah, Dupont, Washington, it was was a, that was a use specific for Kimberly Clark. Again, different part of the country specific for that particular tenant. That building in Oxbridge, I know for a fact, was for Amazon. And I looked at that report. If you look at the first sentence, fourth paragraph, page two of that report, quoted, based on empirical data provided by the potential tenant. So that is an Amazon building. And again, Amazon's the outlier here. And I've gone as far as to say, guys, look, you know, if Amazon is the root of all of our problems here, I've gone on record to say, look, they will not lease this building. But it seems as though a lot of people are bringing up extreme examples and cherry picking data to sort of say, okay, this developer is hiding things from you. I can tell you that I can tell you that I've done four projects as of late that all use land use code one fifty. And I'm sure if if people are doing the level of analysis that I think they're doing on everything that we've done, they looked at those land use code one fifty reports and didn't even use them as examples because it doesn't fit the accusations that we're hearing here. So this this is a little bit concerning, but you know, Bob, you can go ahead. It's your report.
Sorry, I had to, I'm sorry. Yeah, our firm was involved with actually two industrial properties in Oxbridge. The both under the ownership of Campanelli Companies. One of those parks is currently occupied by an eight hundred thousand square foot Medline Building, which is subject to ongoing monitoring by and reporting to the state by our office. And the other is the Amazon facility. And there are several different Amazon facilities that are actually existing, some of which are last mile facilities, others of which are what are known as sortation facilities, which is what that facility in Oxbridge is. It's a sortation facility. And we actually did a number of different methodologies to estimate the trips for that particular use, including the use of empirical information that we obtained directly from Amazon, from its national operations. And we also looked at other land use categories to understand and to do what we call a sensitivity analysis, which we presented to the state, was accepted by Mass DOT at both both the district and the state level, meaning the Boston office level. You know, every project has to be evaluated on on the basis of available information and likely programming of the property. And while you could look at a facility like Oxbridge, which we prepared, and you are correct, and Van Ness had peer reviewed. You know, we I'm failing to understand your exact point as it relates to the site in Holliston. You know, want to elaborate on what what your question is, I would be glad to try to answer it.
So my question is really in this context of speculative development where you don't have a tenant in mind, so you designed the building for a range of tenants. I've seen there's a different responses from different municipalities in terms of how land use code is specified. Some areas, some facilities, like the Cubes at Dupont use one fifty five. One in Oxbridge is using one fifty six. So I'm not trying to say that Amazon is coming in. What I'm trying to get is what is the best practice in that speculative? That's the key word, in that speculative housing environment. You defer to the developer in every case? Do you take input from the town?
I think, I think now I understand better what you're asking. The the methods that we would employ would be to first understand from from best industry practices what the likely range of land uses could be at a facility. And then among those land uses to select the use that is most aligned or best aligned with the intended programming as it's defined by an applicant. And while, and and this is important to understand, in the review of the technical material and the representations of that likely or intended land use type, the end result is often the restriction or the conditioned approval of a project on the basis of how the applicant defines its operations at that site. And what I mean by that is that if you're undergoing state level review, which is in fact the case for this site in Holliston, as it is the case for the site in Oxbridge, the state will eventually issue through Mass DOT what's known as a Section sixty one finding. And that finding has a very specific definition of the intended use within within the permit that that tie and the specific reference to the number of trips that have been represented in the filed material and analysis that serve as the basis for the mitigation. To the extent there is any deviation from the actual use of the building when it's compared to the estimated, the state would have every right to to step in and require a modification of mitigation or other actions that would bring the impact of the project into line. You know, is part of what what's known as an amended Section sixty one finding. So let's take Oxbridge as an example, because that's the one that we worked on. While we had empirical information, we know who the end users would be. It was Amazon. And we have actual operating information from Amazon, from its national operations. We were, we had the benefit of being able to compare that specific data to IT land use equivalents to see how it compared. To the extent, and and now that we have a Section sixty one finding issued for that use with a defined tenant and a defined program and a defined number of vehicle trips that were subject to the analysis, the the owner of the property is now bound through the Section sixty one finding to perform at that level. And in fact, is obligated to monitor its operations for a five year period to demonstrate that that is pace. So it's a long winded answer to your question, but the 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 shorter version of this is that the defined and intended use that is presented by the applicant becomes the basis of the decision and conditions there too. Then any deviation from that would imperil the applicant or proponent either by virtue of a local condition approval or a state level approval through the Section sixty one finding to perform at that level. And if they don't, they're in peril. They could they could get shut down. They could be required to provide more mitigation. You know, so there's, there's an outcome. You know, and and that's the process that that we've used.
Thank you, Robert. Travis, any follow up to that, or are you satisfied?
I just have one quick comment for Mr. Pecunus. You had mentioned that, you know, it's dangerous to to look at existing buildings. I understand there there are different use cases around. I would point out, the the Cubes at Bridgeport, and I'm gonna say ahead of time, I'm not trying to paint a scenario that Amazon's coming to this facility. I believe you'd say it's speculative. The Cubes at Bridgeport in Georgia use land use code one fifty and currently sold that building to KKR, and Amazon is leasing that and using it as a last.
to KKR and Amazon is leasing that and using it as a last mile building center with 500 employees. I'm going to comment on that particular use case.
Right, so I, I don't know the specifics of the land use codes. Are you saying they use the 150 for that project?
At the best of my knowledge, that's what they used.
You're, you're fading in and out. So they, they did not use a 150?
At my knowledge, they used 150 for that traffic study.
They, they did.
Yes.
Okay, so ultimately, Amazon occupied the building. That, I don't know. That, that may have been a case where they had an operation, didn't utilize that much traffic. And again, we're talking about building characteristics dictating use and then operations dictating use. If a tenant like Amazon came to us and said, you know what? This is data fulfillment or data center. They have a lot of this. There's a data center, we're running zero trucks a day. That could have resulted in the land use code 150. Amazon's got all different types of operations. You've seen about, you've seen them, you've heard about them. There's last mile facilities that get newspaper coverage every day. And then there are other type of buildings that get no coverage whatsoever because nobody knows what's in the building. So I'm, I'm assuming that the operation that Amazon had on that particular property didn't dictate the use of a higher land use code. That's if we did a 150 on that particular site. And I don't, I don't know what we did. I'll tell you, I'll take your, your word for it then.
Mr. Chairman, just, just one, one quick response.
Go for it.
I, I, I think that we can take care of the elephant in the room through the condition. And Frank has made it very clear that it's not Amazon. And if we have 1310 ADT, it's not going to be Amazon. Though any, any special permit issued by the planning board would require, if there's any change in use that exceeds that 1310, they're going to have to come back to get approval. So I, I think that's something, if, if the concern of the residents are that this is some sort of a bait and switch, that we're going to start with 1310, that ultimately will be sold to an Amazon, you know, we, we can take care of that. That, that, that's not an intention. And I think we can take care of that being an unintended consequence as well.
Right, and Chip.
Thanks for adding that, Chip. Frank, if I could ask you a quick follow up question, you know, the elephant in the room question. If we are to believe or hear that you folks are not planning to bring Amazon here, you do not have a lease with anybody currently, correct?
Correct.
Do you have any kind of a pre-lease agreement with any tenant for this building?
No, not even close. You can't lease something that doesn't exist. I mean, and, and that's so in my opening narrative, you know, basically, these tenants want to be able to operate on, on a date certain, right? There is no way that anybody would entertain conversations with us knowing this process. They want to see a building up and standing. And there are certain other areas, you know? I, I can't, I can't do pre-leasing in, in the state of New Jersey. It's the same thing. So look, tell us when it's ready.
All right, thank you. Travis, are you all set with your questions?
Yes, thank you for the time.
All right. We're going to go to Mr. Donald Taylor, who has had his hand up for a while. Good evening, Mr. Taylor. If you could give us your address, please. Go ahead, take your time. I think you might be unmuted.
I, I, I have.
All right. Taylor, we're going to get back to you in a second. I think we have a little.
No.
Yeah, can you chat him, please? Okay, we'll get back to Mr. Taylor. I think you have a technical difficulty. Our technology director will help you. Stand by, okay? We're going to move on to the next person. We'll get right back to you then. Ms. Muller, good evening, Eileen. How are you?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can. Your address, please, Eileen?
76 Cortlandt Street.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you to all the select board for all the work that you do for our town over and over again, volunteering and for having us have time tonight to present our concerns. Mr. Pecunius, you said that you were drawn to this site because of the industrial zoning of, and all the traffic that was approved. I'm not sure who was in charge back in 1982, when the MEPA approval was granted. But here we are 40 years later, and you mentioned that the approval process was going so smoothly until residents started to push back in the last few months. And I have to say that it's only been the last three or four months that residents have been aware of what's happening in our town and the reason why we are asking so many questions and asking to be heard. I'm going to join selectwoman Tina Heine in asking the select board to commission a more comprehensive, independent traffic impact assessment with all of the concerns that have been presented tonight and with the coding issue, the land use coding issue that's come up. It's most likely the most significant consequential decision ever to be made in our town, and we just need more data and analysis before decisions are made. I've been doing a little research and I was looking at other proposed warehouses, and there's one in Littleton, not too far from here, that is looking towards 160,000 square foot warehouse. And I looked at their traffic report and it's 213 pages long. And I'm looking at our traffic report, which is 27 pages long. And I'm just thinking, we have not thoroughly vetted all of this. And I'm concerned, I, I'm happy to hear that there will be a limit placed on the number of daily average trips, but I know that commercial real estate changes, you know, that, that they are often bought and sold, they change owners quite frequently. And I'm worried that we are agreeing to something for today. And then when everything changes and it's sold, we're going to be back to the drawing board. So what do we do about the fact that this may not belong to CRG forever?
So conditions imposed during this process, and I'll let counsel opine after I, I talk, conditions imposed during this, this process run with the land. And that's the way of saying that that condition will exist in perpetuity. So if we buy it, if we sell it and somebody else owns it 20 years from now, that condition will still be apparent. Is that right, Chip?
Yeah, I, I think I addressed that with my earlier answer with respect, I mean, town council has, has been stressing enforcement from every, every angle with respect to this project. And this would be another. And I spoke about, to the extent that another party comes in, purchases the, this site and seeks to apply a use which has a higher number in terms of ADT, then that would be a change in use that would trigger, you know, an amendment to the permit or re-review. So to the extent that that condition is on the permit, as Frank says, that runs with the permit and runs with the land, you couldn't have another use without it going back in front of the planning board for another review.
That makes me nervous, the thoughts that we can go back and have to do this all again. But thank you for that.
Well, but that does give you a protection. It's designed to give the, the town a protection.
I understand. Thank you.
Anything else, Eileen?
No, that's it. Thank you again.
All right. Mr. Taylor, we're going to give it another shot. We'll ask you to keep one particular volume control. So keep your laptop muted and just use your phone if you have to. Go ahead, Mr. Taylor. Yeah, Mr. Taylor, again, I'm sorry. I think you have some technical issues there. Oh, there you go. How are you, sir? Oh. No, no good. We can't hear you. All right, Mr. Taylor, we're going to ask you to again, chat with our technology director and try to resolve the issue. In the meantime, we'll move on to the next speaker. I'll recognize Andres Vargas. Good evening, Andres.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Your address, please.
I am at 12 Curve Street.
You're, you're on. Go ahead, sir.
As, as possible, I've got three points I want to bring up. The first one, I noticed there was some inconsistencies, let's say, in the data story being told by CRG and their assault. So I actually took the project to somebody who really knew about it, so I took it to a journalist, a professor at Emerson College who specialized in telling stories through data. And they agreed with me that basically data can tell the story of whoever gets paid to tell it. So with this in mind, I want to make actually not formally a request, and we change a little bit of the language we use here, in terms of not calling some things enhancements or improvements, but rather mitigations. For example, the story of the light that plans to be installed, saying that it's an improvement, there is currently no traffic problem in that intersection. It does not require any improvement or enhancement at all. The other point that I found very big data manipulation was when we talk about the two to four to five percent increase in the traffic, and that is compared to a 1980s MEPA volume of 36,000 trucks. And it is sold as a 78% decrease in traffic. 78% decrease in traffic? This is awesome, it's wonderful. It is not. We are actually putting two to five percent more trucks on the road rather than decreasing 78%. And that is something that I believe needs to be made crystal clear. It's 78% reduction on an empirical, theoretical limit imposed in the eighties. So point two, I will move on to, I really agree with Gary's presentation on traffic, meaning to be higher, although I came to it through a completely different approach to it. And I was like, wow, that's kind of interesting. 360 trucks coming in per day with 180 bays, scratching my head saying like, whoa, this is like two trucks per bay in 24 hours. I mean, these guys are going to take 12 hours to unload and load a truck? Frank came over and said, well, no, there's going to be like high pellet use. So these trucks come in and out is automated. We only have 175 people in. This is efficiency. I'm thinking, well, there's some inconsistency here. I mean, if we're super efficient, how are you going to just use two trucks per bay on day? Why do we need 180 bays? Why are we setting up all this massive infrastructure and capacity when we're saying just 360 trucks will use it per day, 800,000 per feet? My numbers would go up to, I don't know, even 4,000, I mean, that would be a theoretical limit of 4,000 per day, but more like 720 trucks coming in per day would be a reasonable number to attain some commercial value there. So that was my point two. And then point three, that I wanted to bring up very quickly, is related also to 2.6 miles, I believe, which is the distance that we'll need to, to go. And I think, once again, Frank answered the question for me, when he clearly stated that the 2.6 miles were not a factor in the decision, that they, this was not a problem, that it was not a relevant point. So I'm just, once again, scratching my head and asking myself, Frank, did you live on a truck with a road with trucks like I do? I mean, I'm actually two houses off of 16. And you know, at 4:35 AM the traffic, the trucks wake us up. Fortunately, I'm an early bird, it's not a big deal, but if they do, they're very loud. And that's 2.6 miles of residents, that's probably thousands of residents who are going to have 24 hours a day, 720 trips go in front of their house. And like Frank said, that's not a factor in their decision. But unfortunately, it is a factor in our decision, in the quality of life of these thousands of residents that are in the front line, both in Holliston and in Mill, who have not been taken into account. Thank you so much. And I don't know if Frank wants to say something about it.
Peter, if you have, Peter or Frank, any reactions to Mr. Vargas's questions, concerns?
Yeah, a couple of comments. I, on, on the verbiage of the terms, I, I think this is the second or third time I, I got hit with using a term. But, but I think that my term was impact mitigation, and not improvements or betterments or anything like that. But you know, when I talk about site changes, I, I call them impact, impact mitigation. On the data manipulation, you know, you said that we're, we're kind of presenting this as a 78% decrease in what could have been. Yes, we are. But we're also very clear that this would be a two to five percent increase to particular places like Washington, right? That's where you came up with that data. So we are presenting both type of metrics. As far as the efficiency and not figuring out why we need as many dock doors, I, I guess the, the, the simple answer to that is recall what I said about a driver and what happens. The driver comes to the site, drops a trailer, grabs another one and leaves. So oftentimes, they'll pull up to a particular dock door, unhitch, get another trailer, get out of town. Now, it doesn't mean that that particular trailer gets offloaded at that particular moment, particularly when some sort of operation has something going on in that other outgoing bay, or maybe they're stacking a pallet of sodas somewhere else. So it, you know, so oftentimes, these dock doors are occupied with trailers without a cockpit, trailers filled with goods ready to be offloaded. So again, like you can't have these warehouses operating like beehives because it would be completely inefficient. You have to limit the amount of workers for the, for the best efficiency in the building. And that, that would be my response to the narrative.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas, you all set? Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to move on. We'll try Mr. Taylor again. Donald, if you have a question, please ask it.
You're going to have to hit star nine.
Donald, you're going to have to hit star six on your cell phone to be heard.
I, please wait.
Okay, go ahead. What's your question?
My question is this. I, I'm glad that Jason Telemann is there. I'm, I live at Nine Madison Drive in Holliston Woods. There are 25 people, there are 60 homes in Holliston Woods, and 25 of them are on Madison Drive and are on Jackson Drive. And the rear of those homes all go on to the, the solar panel area. I just want to know, we're, we're dealing with CRG, and I, I know the owner of the property is John Delacour Scully. And I'm just wondering, would it be improper to ask Jason to look at the PNS agreement? Because based on what I've heard from people in the planning board, the representative of Delacour Scully or himself have said that there's a PNS agreement in effect that will go into effect, wants to steal clauses. And having bought and sold a lot of houses in my time, I'm a retired radiologist, it usually, these PNS agreements are not boilerplate, they have pluses and minuses to them. And I would think that before we elect, go ahead and discuss this with the CRG, that we should have the town council look at a notarized copy of the PNS that Delacour Scully has said, or his representatives said, we're going to execute and turn the property over to CRG. We might not be dealing with CRG if there's something in the PNS agreement that a lawyer has a chance to look at and exempts Delacour Scully from selling. Now, I should also point out that Mr. Delacour Scully, I, I was a resident of Upton, Massachusetts for 35 years, and I just recently moved here. I, I love Holliston, but I've had dealings with Delacour Scully because he is the owner and of the Upton, I'm sorry, the Grafton-Upton Railroad Company. That should really be named the Grafton-Upton-Hoptown-Franklin Railroad Company now. And he's the same gentleman, by the way, that disregarded a cease and desist order and took timbers down from the, from the land in question. And so I would ask a comment from Jason as to whether or not it would be prudent for the town to get a copy, a notarized copy of the purchase and sale agreement before we continue on with our discussions with CRG. I would also like to state that a warehouse of this size usually costs around $300 a square foot to put together, and you're talking about $21 million. And I think it would be financially crazy for anybody to speculatively build a warehouse of that size. Now, when you go, by the way, to the, the website for the railroad, it shows John Delacour Scully as the CEO and Michael. It shows John Deli Pescoli as the CEO and Michael Milonowski as the, uh, uh, president. And under Delis Pescoli, he's a very astute businessman. It says John Deli Pescoli solely owns First Colony Group. A multi buil-, uh, building and multi tenant commercial property portfolio in the greater Boston area. The last paragraph of that sentence, and it's in black and white, you can look it up. It says John has a two point two million square foot permitted development on the Holliston Medford. Old Milford Line known as New Huppington Brook Industrial Park.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'll ask him to tell him if he could, uh, respond to your question.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to hear that, please.
Jay.
So first of all, I'm not going to comment too much about Mr. Deli Pescoli. There is, you know, there is some history there. Mr. Nylan and I have, um, dealt with that in the court. It's technically still pending. We've dealt with that through some consents and some. Agreements on that. That's not in the past so much as it is in the background now. Uh, since those events, CRG has stepped into the breach and handled all the permitting. It is CRG's application. Uh, there will be no permit going to Mr. Deli Pescoli. I'm happy to take a second look at whatever. Documents they have that form the basis of color of title, but that's all they have to do is show that they have. Some kind of, uh, interest of future interest. Certainly the, the permit would be contingent upon them having access to the site. Um, by way of either a, a long-term ground lease or a fee interest in that. Otherwise it wouldn't be, uh, worth, um, anything, but it's not. Something that can be assigned by them without approval by the board. So it's only going to CRG. It is typical for applicants to, um. Not own the property and to have it under, uh, contingency upon getting permits. I'm not. Of all the issues in this project that give me some concern, many of which have been discussed tonight on enforcement. CRG's ability to take, um, a title to this property has not been a concern of mine. Um, they will have the permit. It will be their responsibility ultimately. Um, and Telly Pescoli and the underlying ownership trust wouldn't have the permit. We're dealing solely with CRG. At this point.
Okay, Jason, may I ask you, i- if a permit is issued to CRG? And, uh, the purchase and sale agreement does not go through, can CRG, uh, dispose? Of the permit itself, uh, or is it non-transferable?
Would only be transferable, um, by, um, approval of the board. To, um.
So the. The board can grant, can grant a permit to CRG. But if Dela Pescoli refuses for whatever reason to execute a purchase and sale agreement. Then CRG cannot dispose of the permitting or the project itself. Is that correct? They'd have to come back to, they'd have to come back to the board.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty traditional for us to not have, um, a permit. Be transferred unless and until there's a trip back to the planning board. For approval of who it's going to be transferred to and evaluate what that particular use would be.
All right. This, this is another thing I wanted to say to the select board. Uh, uh, most people don't realize the size of the project. My wife, Sherry, who's very astute, said that, uh, she went to the internet. And, uh, the only project that she saw that might be comparable was, uh, the, uh, the IKEA store. In Stoughton, Mass. That store is four hundred and fifteen, five hundred and seventy five square feet. And stands, uh, fifty four inches high. Uh, and if that were, uh, it, the, if the project that is now, uh, under consideration by the town. Goes through, we're going to have a whale in our backyard and it'll be over and above the, the berm. That separates the twenty five houses that are in our project, uh, from, uh, the, uh, the proposal. Uh, of that eight hundred square foot warehouse. Uh, not only will that impact, uh, on the town, it, it'll impact negatively. On the tax revenues because twenty five houses in, in, in view of. A whale in the backyard that you can see from the back of your house is going to decrease property values. By anywhere between twenty five and thirty percent as happened in Upton with the railroad. When, when Dela Scully did the same thing on Grove Street and I lived thirty five years in, in the town. And so what he did there and with Grafton, with the propane, uh, transfer station, et cetera, et cetera. And right now what's going on in Hope Dale with, uh, the, uh, three sixty four, um, uh, um, uh, West Street property. That he wants to take by eminent domain, but there's a public hearing, uh, in, in July. Uh, and there's a, a big to do. I spoke with their attorney, uh, Dave Lurie about what's going on there. Uh, he does not have a good track record and I think he would be very wise, uh, Jason. If you got a copy of that purchase and sale agreement and, and gave as town council. Your opinion to the select board as well as to the planning board.
Mr. Taylor, I'm just going to ask you to refrain from making any dis- uh, disparaging remarks about.
No, this is not disparaging. Uh, you know.
Well, I think it is.
When you buy and sell something, uh, you, you, you want to buy and sell with a person who has a good track record. Uh, he, all you have to do is investigate what has gone on before.
We, we hear you. I think.
A very honorable businessman, but he's a very smart businessman. And, you know, uh, I'm not saying anything disparaging about it. I just think we should look, we should look at the.
Move on. Thank you very much. We have another question coming in.
Can I respond, please? Can I respond?
Yes, we'd welcome your response. Again.
Since I'm being disparaged here, it's, it, you know, I'm the owner of the land of. I haven't spoken yet, I haven't spoken yet at a public meeting and. I, I just can't let that one go by, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
No, feel free, Mr. Del.
First of all, for everybody's, uh, benefit, um, the project that Mr., um. Uh, the prior gentleman is speaking about. Uh, came well after this project was been zoned for almost fifty years as industrial. This is a project. This development is, is a fifty year industrial park that has been developed here. It actively developed since the nineteen seventies. Everybody who abuts this knows that. And everybody who butts this bought knowing that, that it's an industrial park. If you don't like airport, airplanes, don't live next to an airport. This is an industrial park that predates all those. That's number one. More importantly, I've worked very closely with your board, different members. Because I've been here for twenty three years carrying this property, looking for the right use to put in here. I've had many chances of putting other uses in this property. I've never brought them forward because they were all what I would consider inappropriate uses. Finally, here we have a, a world-class developer that comes forward that has the wherewithal to build a, an annuity for the town. Not one person tonight has talked about what benefit this project brings as far as economic benefit. Most cities and towns would be thrilled to have an annuity of over a million and a half dollars coming in. Uh, more importantly, um, you know, I've worked closely with all the boards over the years. And it's important to note that every time I've been in front of the boards, both the conservation, the planning board. And the Board of Selectment over the years. Every permit I've ever asked for, every extension I've ever asked for has been approved unanimously. I've paid my taxes for twenty three years. My property just got reassessed for a use of the warehouse use that I obviously were running into problems. I've even been able to use it for what I'm being assessed for. I mean, I've worked so hard with the town over the years. I've worked with, I were, helped you with the rail trail. I've given good advice on the railroads. Issues with CSX. I've been a willing partner and a good partner to the town. And I've always had a great relationship with all the boards. And I've always, every project has always been unanimously approved. And for Mr. Taylor to disparage what I've done on the other towns, that is, that is incorrect. I've worked very well with the other towns and I suggest you call the town managers and ask them directly. Uh, I'm going to leave it at that. But I just think it's important to note that I've been a good partner for twenty three years to the town of Holliston. I've brought forward a great project. And I've handed it off to Mr., uh, Fatunis to move it forward. This is a once in, in, in a lifetime chance for Holliston. Nobody's going to touch this property. This is going to remain, you know, you're going to get very. Much less, much less desirable uses, much less tax revenue with any alternatives. This is a very fine project with a very fine developer who's going to give you. Mitigations that no local person could ever imagine. And that's true. And I really hope that you look long and hard and, and, and support this project. He's willing to do everything to manage it. It's seventy five percent less impact. Than what was approved. I mean, that's the bottom line. So thank you for your, thank you for letting me, uh, respond to Mr. Taylor's, uh, remarks. And thank you for, uh, having this hearing tonight.
That's why we're here, Mr. Deli Pescoli. Thank you for your comments. We're going to move on to a few more questions. Uh, the next up is Barbara Ryan. Barbara, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could get to your address, that would be great.
Yes, I'm at six forty five Washington Street. Recently moved from the DC area after being there for thirteen years about almost two years ago. Uh, for many reasons, uh, chose Holliston. I guess my, our. Comments, uh, and questions around safety, environment and quality of life. As far as traffic and I'm new to the conversation, my background is more medical and leadership, so. I am not a traffic expert for the record. Um, just wondering if can be considered capacity analysis. Um, blind spots, um, and crash data projection, capacity again, analysis, peak hours, if known, I guess that will be tenant dependent. Um, miscellaneous traffic issues and reports. Does the thirteen ten, if that is what is agreed upon for a tenant, does that include trucks plus the five hundred so employees? Um, or is the five hundred so employees been, uh, on top of the thirteen hundred ten? Twenty four seven, um, the residential area. Um, that stretch of road, I drive that way to go to, um, to shop. And I know the conditions of those roads are terrible. So just wondering again, going forward, whose responsibility is that? The town, the state, a combination thereof? My second environment, um, is there consideration? I know there's been talk about water and noise. And I'm not sure if there's been discussion about air pollution impact and even vibration for people living on the road with that amount of traffic. What are vibrational levels? Um, and how would that be measured in the traffic study? Third, quality of life kind of wraps up. I do appreciate, um, sir, that fifty years. In the making, the industrial park, but it seems to possibly be a legacy. And maybe not meeting the needs of the current community and appreciate your position, but as a. Current community member and having young children, um, just wondering the vision for the future. And is the revenue, um, the annuity benefit? How would that impact this town? And then I guess that's for the, the select persons, um, and the planning board. Um, but just wondering this legacy vision, does that meet a future vision of this town? And for quality of life, certainly air, water, uh, infrastructure. Uh, it's a very active community and I, I really appreciate, um, you letting me make these comments. And appreciate everyone being at this table to have these very fruitful and, um, I believe necessary discussions to, to plow the way forward. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Barbara. Before I kick this over to Peter and his team to deal with your questions about traffic, I can address a couple of them. Uh, Route sixteen, uh, Washington Street is a state highway. Um, it is the state's responsibility to maintain and upgrade that, that particular roadway. There are stretches where Holliston overlapped its jurisdiction, but I believe that area is state highway. And regarding the annuity benefits of the town of Holliston, um, way out in front of our, that's a, that's a question for another day. But clearly stated, you know, one point five million dollar per year infusion of new revenue. Would be a substantial impact to the way we operate our town. Uh, there have been a lot of conversations, anecdotal and otherwise, that could suggest where that money could be spent. But, um, suffice to say, if and when that ever became a reality, there'll be a lot of conversations, um, about where the benefit of that cash could go. Um, oh, it, it's not something we can resolve this evening, Miss Ryan. I hope you can appreciate that, but. As they say, with that would be a good problem to have all by itself, you're doing budgets. Uh, but aside from that, Peter, if I could ask you to address some of the questions that Barbara brought forward regarding traffic and the, um. The counts of trucks, employee vehicles and things of that nature.
Yeah, yeah, the thirteen ten is a hard number, so that's, that's all in, uh, for, for, for eight average daily trips per day from the project. On environment, uh, we have a, a number of studies that are all posted and I believe we've been conscientious in, in every regard, uh, with that. So, uh, from, from, from water, stormwater. That, that, that's all, that's all part of the filings that we have made and I, and I think we have done that positively. The, the, the front end park, just in general, is about a hundred acres, uh, with. About six hundred thousand square feet of space developed over that, that thirty year span from. From, uh, seventy, when the project, uh, started or sixty nine, when it was rezoned to, uh, to two thousand. Um, we've, we basically have built about sixty thousand since then with, with Farmacan. Um, and, and that's, uh, that's where the project is. And, and this. Is going to be on about eighty five acres. Um, it would be eight hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Um, I could, uh, look at the coverage analysis of that hundred acres, but my guess is it probably would. Be in excess of what we're proposing here. We've got a lot more open space with this project, uh, in general. So, um, and, and, and if we were to try to develop this independently as, 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 say, say eight, one hundred thousand square foot buildings. You could never, um, get the same benefits with the large berm that we're going to build. Uh, to mitigate some, um, some visual and sound impacts. Um, as well as the efficiency and, and how to manage the land. So there, there are some, some serious benefits to doing one larger project than, than a lot of smaller projects. That, that much I can say. So I would say that all the reports that are on the town website, uh, would substantiate that. We have three independent peer review engineers that have to review all of the data that we've submitted. And, uh, their reports are also posted and available for you to review. So I hope I've done my best.
Yeah, Barbara, any follow up? Are you good here? You're all set. Okay, great. We're going to move on to Steve McElany, who's been waiting a while. Steve, good evening. If you could give us your address, please.
Sure, uh, Steve McElany, twelve Carriage House Way in Medway. I know we've had, uh, quite a few questions back and forth about the average daily trips of thirteen ten, uh, going to the facility. The question I want to ask is, would it be possible if, if we're committed to this, and I'm hoping we're not. Um, would they be willing to put a hard cap in saying there's a hard cap of thirteen ten a day? So. Not having seven hundred one day and then eighteen hundred another day. Um, would they be willing to put a hard cap per daily, uh, trip? Uh, on that facility versus an average daily trip? And also would they be willing to cap the number of trucks, uh, a specific cap on the number of trucks versus just giving me an average daily trip? You can do a lot with an average, you know, you don't ship anything on Sunday and all of a sudden you have an extra two hundred a day. Then, uh, you can push it down the streets of Holliston, um, and the surrounding areas. So that was one question.
All right. Why don't we, uh, pause real quick and ask either Frank or Peter for a response on that?
You know, what we've done in the past, and this has come up, there's another project, a, a couple of projects I did in the state of Pennsylvania. Everywhere in Pennsylvania gets a truck, truck, truck restriction, by the way. And when it comes time to actually write the language that's imposed as a condition, it's usually over a five-day average. Now, that basically gives everybody the comfort that they need. So keep in mind. Um, when I've got engineers and, and people tell us that truck trips can be this much, right? And I say, okay, well, my tenants will need this much. I'm basically going to a bare minimum and saying, okay, that's what I'm willing to expect, accept. If I'm held to a daily maximum, I really have to think about whether or not. That would be okay. I'm certainly fine with a five-day average. If it's a three-day average, even better, but a daily max, I don't know about that just because of the specificity of what that would trigger. just because of the specificity of what that would trigger. I'm willing to entertain anything, though. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I have agreed to five-day averages. I've never agreed to a daily max.
Okay, thank you. Steve, I think you had a follow-up question.
I did. I had a question versus, we asked if any trucks would be fueling on the site, and we were told no, or needing to fuel off. Are all the yard dogs on the site then going to be electric, or how would they be refueled?
If that's a condition that the township wants to impose, then yes, they'll be electric. Now, keep in mind, we have to put electric chargers there anyway. So, as far as yard dog trucks, we'd have one, maybe two, no more than two on the site. We will have electric chargers, and I know a lot of them are electric, so if that's a condition, then sure.
Okay. And my final question, and forgive me, because I forgot kind of how this all happened in the past, but on whose order did all the trees get cut down? Was that CRG, or was that Guttis Story?
No, that was, that was the owner. You know, another part of this narrative is that I've heard, people have, you can imagine how many emails and calls I get about this project, and I have heard accusations of, quote unquote, "the owner going in and illegally cutting trees," which is, which is wrong. The owner has, or the owner has a permit to cut trees. And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chip, you can follow up on this, I think what they didn't do is they didn't meet an obligation attached to that permit to basically present a sequencing diagram and tell the township a certain amount of time before cutting those trees what they were about to do. So, I think that was the breach. Now, Chip, correct me if I'm wrong, if you want to fill in the blanks or add color?
Yeah, just briefly, there's a, there was a permit that was issued. The question was whether or not there was an actual land disturbance associated with the cutting of the tree, since there was no grubbing, the trees were cut and were felled, and there was a dispute. In order to end that dispute, the town filed this suit against us. We agreed, we'd actually agreed the day before, but we agreed that we would not cut any further trees. We've gone through the planning board, we've submitted what's required in order for us to remove the trees, which has been done. Mr. Attorney Talerman mentioned that it has not been dismissed, so it's still out there and can be enforced, but you know, as far as we're concerned, that's, that's behind us, and it was not CRG, it was the, it was the owner took those steps under the land disturbance permit that had been issued.
Anything else, Mr. McElany?
No, thank you, and I appreciate the board, the select board's time this evening in tackling these very important issues for our towns.
You're welcome, thank you. Terry, I know you have your hand up, I'm going to call on you next after I get Atul Suri out of the way, because Terry, you've already spoken once. So, if you don't mind, hang on, we'll go to, I believe it is Atul Suri, if I didn't name correctly.
Yes, you did, thank you. Hi, I'm at 18 Praying Indian in Holliston. So, I'm not going to repeat a lot of questions that have already been asked about, you know, the traffic, the trucks, the roads, the air pollution. One thing that I didn't see, and maybe it's buried somewhere in one of the reports, is what is, does the impact of a project of this size have on other town services, specifically, you know, fire department, police department, you know, water? We know our water quality has been problematic, you know, what, has there any study been done on the impact on those services that the town provides for a facility of this huge size? I, you know, I don't know if that's been buried in any of the analysis that's been done.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, we haven't done a study, nor have I ever, do I ever recall doing one, but you know, as a rule, when townships look at a building like this, it's a pretty simple analysis to say, okay, this development isn't going to send any kids to our school, right? So, that's a big positive. You know, number two, we have pretty heavy up fire systems in these buildings, as you can imagine, they're called ESFR sprinkler systems, that stands for early suppression, fast response sprinkler system. So, fire departments love to see us come because we have pretty sophisticated equipment with respect to that. As far as police monitoring, we don't require patrols, nothing that would be any higher standard than, let's say, a typical residential use. You can imagine also that a lot of these companies, again, they're Fortune 500 type of companies, do have their own security forces, right? If it's, if Apple decides to store a whole bunch of iPhones, you can imagine there's going to be security in the building. So, these things are traditionally not a draw on municipal services. We haven't done the study, but I just, I just know that aspect of what we do.
We might disagree with that, Frank. By the time we, and if we get to any kind of impact discussion, you'll hear more from us on that, but we have had some internal discussions about the size of the facility and the impact it might have on our emergency services, but I don't think this is the venue this evening to get into that. But to answer Mr. Suri's question, I think it's safe to say, there's been discussions at the town level about the various impacts that could be forthcoming from this project. Fire department is one of them, water is another. So, we've had some discussions, but we have not formulated a strategic plan yet, and we probably won't until and if this project proceeds more formally to our attention. Anything else, Mr. Suri?
No, I'm good, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Jim, I just was going to add one item, just to put in, put in your, I guess, your bonnet to have for that day when you do assess the impacts, would be that you do benefit greatly from the fact that your current standpipe that is on Hopping Brook Road is single-fed with the main that's in Hopping Brook itself, back out to Washington, will have the benefit of that main now looping through Hopping Brook, through the Holliston Woods project, back out to Washington. So, that is a benefit that you have not had the benefit of yet, because we can't extend it until we do this project.
The fire chief is nodding his head up and down.
Gary is well over at GPW, both will benefit from this. Thank you.
You know, I'd also add that as far as water use, traditionally, we are not a big user of water, you can imagine. We're not, we're not manufacturing things in these buildings. And, you know, I do recall that townships that have volume concerns make us do a volume tank on-site, right, for water and whether or not we need to charge a sprinkler system. So, I assume that the fire department is going to completely vet the application of our building permit, and that's where a lot of these things come through, where, you know, the fire marshal will really comment on the operational aspects of the building.
Thank you, Frank. We have, let's see, a hand up at this point, we will go to Terry, there is somebody after you, but Terry, you had some follow-up questions?
Yes, thank you very much. I actually wanted to follow up on a couple of comments that were made, I think, by Chip Nylan and by Peter Bemis about the way that the environmental was handled, was done very well and very transparent and things like that for this project. I have a few questions related to that. Basically, one of the questions I have is the MEPA permit. You were trying to ask, you sent a letter back in last year, July, I think, or June, to MEPA requesting that the studies and everything that were done back in 1982 should stand at this point so that you don't have to do any additional work out on that property for environmental concerns. And they came back to you and said they disagree with you, not only with the traffic study you did, but also with several other things, and the fact that you put in the pharma property without going back to them before you did that, because that was supposedly part of the Phase 2, where you were supposed to report into DEPA and MEPA before you did that. So, that's one of my questions, is where does that stand? And as far as being transparent, some of the processes that you use, like MEPA is supposed to be providing meaningful opportunities for public review of potential environmental impacts. And I think the way that some of this was done, for example, using the RDA process versus the ANRAD process, the request for determination, that requires no notification to the community. It basically requires that you put a notice in the paper, and if people see it, they have so many days to give comment on it. And that's fine, it's within the legal process, but then one of the things you did as far as trying to figure out, and that's related basically to the wetlands issue, so what you did was you handed the RDA to our conservation committee the day after Thanksgiving in 2020, and that requires them to go out, they're required by the bylaws to go out within 21 days and make a decision if wetlands are going to be impacted by this project. For one thing, the ground's frozen between, and for one thing, you're putting it between Christmas, Thanksgiving and Christmas, so you've got to go out there and rush between this season and do this. Another thing is the ground is probably frozen during that time. I haven't had a chance to go back and look at the weather during that time. But then, once that's done, and if a decision is made, and they put it in the paper, and that was over the holidays, so for one thing, it's COVID period, for another thing, it's the holidays, so the chances of people having a chance to see it and comment on it is a really tricky piece, I want to say, and it really, if I wanted to not have the community comment on it, just the exact way I would have done it. And I, it's still within the law, but I'm just saying, I don't think it was, quote unquote, "transparent." And then, the other thing that I wanted to mention is when the Medway Butters were notified, which was not until the variance on the, on the structure was, required them to have to go out and notify all the Butters, when they found out about it, they put in their own RDA to the Conservation Commission with a map with three vernal pools that they had seen over the past years that had come onto that property, that were not any of the certified vernal pools, quote unquote, but they were vernal pools nonetheless, and Massachusetts is highly, highly sensitive about their vernal pools. So, they put in a map that says, we're happy to go out with you and show you where we saw it. But the landowner said, we will not allow them on the property to go with the Conservation Commission to try to identify them. So, I question that as being, being very open about environmental processes. So, when the Conservation Commission was forced to go out there and try to find them, I think he found one that was the potential, but he couldn't find the other two. And I looked at the study that was done by Echotech for, for the landowner, and they did a really good job. They identified a lot of trees out there and a lot of the herbaceous levels, a lot of the lower levels of trees and bushes and things, but they, they used certified vernal pools as what they considered vernal pools on that site. And I'm arguing that we didn't go out in the vernal pool season to look at vernal pools, which are highly important to Massachusetts. And I'm arguing that we should have to go out there during vernal pool season, we should allow the Medway Butters, who legally put in an RDA with their notice, that they should be allowed to go out there with the Conservation Commission, and I also believe that we should be able to, in accordance with our bylaws, hire our own independent wetland scientist to go out with the Conservation Commission and the Medway Butters to see if we have actual vernal pools on that site. And I furthermore say that if those trees were taken down where those vernal pools are, then there should be something gone in as far as legal, and go to DEP and even at the national level, federal level, to put in a notice on that. That should have to be restored. So, those are some of my questions and some of my comments to this. The other thing-
Sorry, I was going to see if there was any response on your first piece, if you would, Terry, from our friends at the CRG. Peter, does any member of your team want to respond to Terry's questions on the first matters?
That's, that's, Chairman, that's going to have to be me, Chip Nylan, but is she finished?
She is on to her next question. I thought you might want to chunk it out and maybe address some of the issues surrounding the environmental.
I just assumed that she raised them all.
Very well, continue, Terry.
Thank you. I, mine, it's kind of related to the traffic. If, if they want to keep this at 1310 vehicles going in and out of this facility, then why not build what is equated to a 1310 trip, average daily trip facility by the ITE code of 150, which is a 200,000 square or smaller building? And then, if, if we go above 1310 trips, who's going to enforce that and what is going to happen at that point? And I think that's it for my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Terry. All right, you're up, Chip.
Okay, so, with respect to MEPA, first of all, that's not a permit. What it is, is it's an umbrella information gathering process. So, for instance, when they went through in 1982, we didn't get a permit to be able to build 3 million square feet of R and D and office, we got the ability to go to the state agencies in order to get those permitted. So, MEPA is not a permit, it doesn't do anything other than allow you to go to the next step and make sure that you've looked at alternatives. When I was brought in, I looked at the 1982 approval by MEPA, which had 3 million square feet of office and R and D, and when I looked at how much we were at, I filed what's called a notice of project change, because since the market had changed, this is industrial property, I filed and requested a notice of project change stating that I did not believe that we needed to present any additional information for state agencies to make decisions. What was in front of the Mass DOT was a decision that had been made in 1982 based upon the traffic, that we were going to have to do traffic improvements by putting in signalization. And so, what I went to find is what other information, you know, they needed, and as I think it's been well represented, and it's been on all of the websites, what they said was that we had to do additional traffic analysis, and they brought up the wastewater issue, which had not been on my radar when I went in, which stated that since we were in excess of the Title V septicage requirements, we're going to have to go under DEP authority. So, we were issued a decision in July of 2020 that gave us a direction of what we have to do, and that if we're going to do any other work out there, we have to file another NPC. We also agreed that we would conduct additional traffic analysis upon the transfer of this land. So, when this, when this property is sold, there'll be additional analysis that Scott has talked about and others have talked about. So, in our view, we have complied with MEPA. The next NPC that's filed will be a public document, just as this one is and has been, and people will be included, and they'll get to see the analysis that we submit. With respect to the wetlands, I happen to have heard this argument a couple of times previously, when one goes through the wetlands, I sat on my Conservation Commission for nine years, and, and I think that she's indicated that she hired McGregor and Legere, and they're wetland experts as well, and they'll tell you that there are ways to go through the process. We went through the process, we identified where the wetlands were, we asked the Conservation Commission to come out and tell us whether or not it was jurisdictional. They said, no, you're more than 100 feet away. We purposely designed the project to be out away from the wetlands intentionally, so we wouldn't have to go through that process. We're, you know, no one was being surreptitious about that. To the extent that you can design a project outside the wetlands, that's in everybody's interest, and that's what, that's what this developer did. I was also there when others came back and said, you did it at the wrong time, no one knew about it, and they had another review, they had a peer review, and the agent went out and determined that still, that there were wetlands, we were outside the wetland jurisdiction. Their counsel will tell them that the time of year really doesn't matter as much as with the vegetation and what's in the soils, and there are ways- much as with the vegetation and what's in the soils, and there are ways that you can determine if it's a wetland, whether it be January, whether it be April, or whether it be November. So, you know, that's, that has, the wetland line is the wetland line, the, your Conservation Commission, the Holliston Conservation Commission, looked at this a number of times and had the same arguments presented, and they, uh, they stated that the determination applicability had been issued correctly and, um, and didn't issue any, or, uh, any amendment or other, or otherwise. They didn't find that there was, uh, anything wrong with what had been submitted. I think in terms of legal-
May I interject?
Yeah, if I could just finish.
Okay, sorry.
If you have counsel, if you think that we did something wrong, counsel will raise it. I have not, I've looked at it, I haven't seen that we did anything wrong. Peter Bemis brought in experts, we worked with the Conservation Commission on a number of, a number of times, and I haven't seen any reason that the decision that we are, yeah, I think we should, you know, this is funny, I think we should be applauded for designing a project that's outside of the wetlands and we don't have to go to the Conservation Commission. I mean, that tells you, when, when John Delaprescoli talks about this being, uh, you know, the type of, of developer you want to have in your community, that's the way Frank is. So, uh, he avoided those impact. Um, I think we've all, we've, we've talked probably five or six times about enforcing the traffic, and, um, and so I don't, I don't think I have anything else to, uh, offer on that. That could be Scott or, or Frank on that, but the other wetlands matters, uh, and MIPA be answered.
I, I just want to add one thing on, on the wetlands, Ms. Stifler, just, just one item, please, because this is what you're also failing to recognize, is that the, the, the park, um, since 1969, okay, so, so wetlands were maybe viewed a lot differently back then, but the first 1,400 feet, or the first quarter mile of this road goes through town land to get there. That town land was also wetland, okay? And so wetlands were a big part of this project, and you look at the permitting window back in the seventies, that was one of the, the difficulties, if you will, to overcome. Then there are another 30-odd years of development within this park, and of which John was involved in the last 20-odd years, so that 50. The Conservation Commission has been out here numerous times in that whole period of time, from the time I was involved in the project for probably around five years, going back to 2015, uh, 16, they, they've been out. So when we put the RDA in, it was really somewhat perfunctory, in my opinion, that I was going to say, to bring them to areas that they've already been before, they knew where the wetland limits were because we were gonna, going back to the same zones again, and we were coming to them saying, "We're not going to do any work in those zones," going back to what Chip just said about Frank. Frank told us, "Put in as the best project you can." We didn't go down in that hole back into the site. That's why I'm saying there's about 20 acres of land, it's just open space here, not going to be touched, not going to be developed. You're not going to get that when you look at it different ways. If you go back to office buildings and putting 3 million square feet here, you'd never get that. So, so this was environmentally sensitive, in my opinion, and we were not circumventing any process. You've said that a number of times, I will take issue with it because it's wrong. Thank you.
I didn't say you circumvented, I said you stayed within the laws, but if I was going to do this to avoid public notice of it, public notice, uh, public noticing it, I would have done it the same way. But can I just go back to, I understand the wetlands, the wetlands you can identify easily outside of the season, I get that. But vernal pools are only there for two months, that's the maximum, some of them, and it's more difficult to identify them with frozen ground. And one of the requirements in Article 30 of our Wetlands Bylaw, by law, section three, says that basically regardless of whether this site has been certified by the Massachusetts Divisions of Fisheries and Wildlife, you still have to go out and take a look at the vernal pools. So the, the, uh, Echotech study just referenced back to the certified vernal pools, which I went out and looked at, and they're clear of the site, but they did not look at, on the site to see if there were vernal pools because they couldn't. The ground was frozen and it was not easily identifiable. So all I'm asking is that we take the, uh, we get our independent wetland scientists with our CONCON, and we go out there in the vernal pool season, and we confirm for sure that there's nothing there. That's all I'm asking. If you're confident that there's nothing there, then there shouldn't be any fear to go back out there during the vernal pool season and look. And that's all I'm asking. There could be critters-
Not here, Ms. Stifler.
Danger, we don't know. We haven't looked at it. You haven't looked at, when did you do this? Did you look at the, the vernal pools at vernal pool season?
Can I jump in? Terry, can I jump in and follow up on one of the comments that you made and something that Richard Nylan, uh, sorry, Attorney Nylan spoke to, the notice of project change? Um, so in the MIPA, most recent MIPA, uh, decision, they do talk about, uh, efforts to secure open space for conservation restriction on the site. Peter, you just made reference to 20 acres of land that's untouched and will remain open. Um, can you talk through, if you, if you would briefly, ever so briefly, being so late, um, are there plans to secure a conservation restriction, and would these be the 20 acres that you're referring to?
There, there has been attempts to go in that direction, um, and, and, and I hope they're, they're not lost at this point. Um, I have spoke to Mr. Frascoli about that, uh, and his assistant, Mike Milonowski, and, um, I still hope that that's the case. The commission, uh, we've had, uh, informal discussions about it. It, it's still there, but, uh, that's not in CRG's hands. The, the area I was talking about is on CRG's site. That is the, uh, north easternmost portion of their property. So there, there, there are, um, sensitive areas that are off locusts that are on Mr. Frascoli's land that he still has title to. Uh, the CRG portion is just a wetland area that's in the, uh, northeast portion of their site.
Thank you, Peter. Terry, Terry, we've, uh, we've, we've had, uh, an extended period of time with your Q&amp;A. If you could be brief with your follow-up, we need to move on to at least two more questions. Thank you.
I think Tina's was a good point. I figured it said 45 acres in the MIPA, um, study should be conservation restriction. We just need to maybe double check that. Sounds a good point, Tina. Thank you. I think I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna move on to somebody identified as Joe, so we're gonna need a last name and an address, please.
Yeah, hi, this is Joe Cooper, uh, at 89 Rockland Street. Can you hear me?
We can, please go ahead.
Great, thank you, uh, for giving me an opportunity to ask a question. I have, uh, just one question and I think just kind of one comment following up on some, uh, other statements that I've heard tonight. I'll start with the comment. Um, so, so I forget who it was, but someone mentioned that one large tenant is better than 10 small tenants and, um, that this large warehouse could be better than office buildings in some ways, and I just wanted to offer a counterpoint to that, uh, which is, you know, I've been, like many people on this call, probably working from home for the past year. And, um, I think a lot of us have seen in the news that companies are, uh, exploring ways to bring, you know, uh, offices closer to their employees and where their employees live. So, eh, looking at the demographics of Holliston, I think the vast majority of people in this town have professional jobs, um, the median income is quite high, uh, and the average home price is, and some might say astronomical, uh, to buy, to buy a house in, in this town. Um, and eh, eh, I, I, you know, am from Indiana and I grew up, uh, working in warehouses and jobs like this, so I'm not trying to shed any, uh, you know, negative light on those types of jobs, but the warehouse jobs, eh, at this warehouse likely, the people in those jobs, I, I don't know if they would be living in Holliston or able to purchase a home in Holliston on the salary of a warehouse worker, but, um, it, it just seems that offices would be more likely to be occupied by the residents of this town, um, eh, than a warehouse. And so it would be nice to be able to drive, you know, a block or walk to work as opposed to having to drive 45 minutes, including through, you know, streets congested with more trucks. Uh, so that's, I just wanted to share that counterpoint. Um, and then my question is for, uh, Mr. Petunias. Um, if, if the town elects not to approve this, would CRG honor that decision?
Um, well, it depends on what circumstances, too, and I, I think I know where you're going with this. So, you know, appealing, appealing a township decision is, is not wrong or underhanded, right? Um, it's, it's one of the options afforded to people of legal standing. If, if it were wrong or underhanded, you know, we, we would say something about, you know, low of the residents appealed, one of our permits already, right? So it's just a, eh, eh, it's, it's a tool that we have to sort of, um, voice our opinion counter to what we believe is right. So I will tell you that we have a lot of time and money invested in this project, and we're trying like heck to give the township what it wants, deliver a less impactful project. Um, so the, the short answer is, I don't know, but I have, I have appealed township decisions in the past, but I just don't know at this point.
And, um, a follow-up question to that. You, you've offered a lot of suggestions, um, which at this point, I'm not sure are binding or not, about mitigations that you, that CRG would be willing to undertake, uh, to make this project more palatable to the community. Um, if, if the board were to, uh, not approve, or the town were not to approve this, uh, your application or this project, um, and you were successful in an appeal, would you, would those mitigations continue in effect? Would you continue to offer those to the town, or would you take those off the table?
Well, I don't know what the, I don't know what the law is. I know we had a similar situation in Pennsylvania, um, recently. So a township denied our use, we appealed it, and the court ruled vigorously in our favor. And the court also said, "Hey, by fact that you won, this township can't impose any conditions upon you." So what we did is we went back to the township and said, "Okay, no harm, no foul, we're still willing to honor everything that we offered you previously." So I don't see this being any different. I would be that, that guy. I would, I would, you know, I wouldn't hold anything against anybody, and yes, I would honor these things that we're offering now. Absolutely.
Thank you for your candid answers.
All right, we have one more question this evening, and, uh, then we will wrap up. Um, this one is from Janet Sheen. Good evening, Janet. Could you give us your address?
Good evening, Janet Sheen, 5 Old Surrey Lane, Medway. I'm a director butter who is concerned with noise, as I can now hear trucks accelerating on 495, which is three miles away from my house. But I'm actually going to, um, speak to the traffic concerns because it affects all of us. And using the numbers that, that they want to stick to of the 300, uh, trips being trucks, and also using their numbers of 30% of the traffic turning east, that's approximately 100 trucks going through downtown Holliston, or possibly down Summer Street in my town where there's a school and multiple crossings across the street. Now, we all know those numbers are probably four times that, but let's just say it is just 100 trucks. But we're also not talking about their master plan of building out to 1.5 million square feet, which will double that number. So let's, let's imagine 200 extra tractor-trailer trucks going through small downtown Holliston. And I don't have a question tonight, I just have one comment. I would like to say one word: no. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. We appreciate your, your contributions. As far as I can tell, that is it for contributions from, um, the citizens this evening. We tapped out, I believe, at over 230 participants this evening. Uh, not surprisingly, some of them have gone to bed. But, uh, first I'd like to thank, um, all of the citizens and abutters who joined us this evening to share their, uh, very thoughtful, um, and informed opinions with, um, our, our friends from CRG that are joining us this evening. Uh, the point of all this was to ensure public input on the project was heard. Uh, we heard it, we hope you did, too. Uh, over the next several weeks and months, we know you have some work to do with our friends at the planning board, um, and we'll watch that proceeding, uh, to see where it takes us. In the event you end up back in our realm, uh, first I want you to know, it was our pleasure having you, uh, this evening. We understand it's a late night. You have, uh, a team of people, uh, that gave us a lot of their time to a, answer these questions, and we appreciate that, Peter. So on behalf of the board, um, Mr. Pecunis, uh, Mr. Nylan, uh, Mr. Mishod, and, uh, Mr. Delaprescoli, who announced himself this evening, I want to thank you for joining us. Um, we want to make sure that overall people understand that this process needs to have an open, public face. Uh, our website, the town administrator mentioned earlier, is a platform where most, if not all of the public information is shared. So at this point, I would like you to be, um, aware that the town will remain very vigilant, um, monitoring the, the progress of this project and, uh, hopefully keeping the lines of communication open. Do you have any closing thoughts or remarks, Mr. Bemis?
No, I just want to thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and, and I also want to thank, uh, Travis, uh, who came into this position, uh, new, uh, so he's been very helpful in, uh, coordinating things with, uh, with staff and, and with Jay Tallerman to, to keep the line of communications open between us and, and you folks, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Peter, uh, there were, throughout the evening, there were a lot of questions about information, uh, earlier this evening. I mentioned to you that there were public documents presented. In the event that you find, um, the opportunity for your team to respond to that information and share it through Travis to us, uh, we would appreciate it. Um, that's the line of communication that I referenced a few minutes ago. Please keep it open.
Yes, sir.
All right. So folks, at this point, uh, the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moves.
I'll second that.
Uh, without any further discussion, uh, I will, Jay, can't tell if you have a hand up or not, Jay Tallerman. Call those if they ever say aye.
Aye.
That's it for this evening, folks. Thanks for joining us. We hope you have a pleasant, safe evening. Good night.
Thanks.